So I'll call the Concord School Committee meeting to order.
And I'm calling the Regional School Committee to order. Note that we're being recorded. The Concord, Kyleisle school committees will enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law. My mic is on. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective binding sessions for contract negotiations for non-union personnel and return to open session approximately 6:30.
So moved?
All is in favor?
For both.
You want to second it first?
Second.
Booth, I for both.
Go on for both.
Point nine for both?
I don't know if it's for both then.
No, it's not.
You're never both.
Yeah, that's true.
Your both is in two places. All right. Great. I'd like to call the Concord School Committee meeting back into order.
And I'd like to call the Regional School Committee back to order and note that we're being recorded. Thank you CCTV. So the first item on the agenda is public comments. Could we have any public comments? So we'll move right along to recognitions. We have a longtime, highly regarded employee leaving our districts and we want to recognize this individual for past service and the excellent commitment to the position. And I note that Joanna Pointon has been serving longest with John Flaherty. And are you ready and would you like to make?
I'm sure some others would too. I'm the lucky one. I got the most years with John.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm in there with him.
Oh yeah. That's right.
I was going to say we're going to miss you, John. That's it, I'm good.
That works for me. My remarks can be a little longer. You and I have worked together for a number of years. I've had a few different hats on. You've always had one on representing the schools. And I think looking back on the many problems you've solved, I would say you always took other people's problems, made them your own in your role, worked through them, always did the follow-through, and never let anybody down. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just say I hope it wasn't something I said. I think the only thing I can witness is that you've really helped recently in the transition to support Lori and we thank you for doing that.
All right though? I'm going to take a minute so.
I'm sure.
I have a song and dance prepared. So first of all, I don't know if I should be, but my remarks are a little recycled of things people have heard, but I do, I want to start by saying that doing the job that John does is like a varsity sport. And so he should have a varsity jacket from C.C.
Oh, that's great.
We also have this chair that he got for John. This is really reserved for some of the people who've done some of the most incredible service. And on the back it says, John Flaherty, Deputy Superintendent of Concord Public Schools, Concord Carlisle Municipal School District, 2003-2018. You know what, just sit in it while I read.
They told me the rockers are on the.
There are a few rollers on that for you. All right, and I have.
Well, finally, comfortable chair.
Fifteen years later.
Fifteen years. So I have customarily written a letter to the person who's leaving. A Dear John letter though, isn't that when you like? And I know some of you will recognize some of these words because I wrote about John for the town meeting honoring of him and some of it just was too good to recycle. I liked how, so it starts this, Dear John, thank you, thank you, thank you. You began your work in Concord and Concord Carlisle School Districts in 2003. In your fifteen years with us, you've overseen the budget of two school districts totaling roughly $60 million. And I think you did thirty-four budgets on budget, thirty-four on your time. That's amazing. We are so, we're so going to miss you. You managed transportation department and the services of all students in both districts. You oversaw reconciliation of countless expenditures and encumbrances, managed thousands of procurement practices across the school system, and have been instrumental in conversations regarding our middle school buildings and their infrastructure. And you wrote the initial statement of interest to the state and oversaw four school building projects. Especially notable was your guidance on the regional high school project to the tune in $92 million. And we came in on time and under budget, helping with countless MSBA filings and serving as a primary interface to the state. This is an exhaustive and yet very incomplete list. You've shouldered huge responsibility and many would argue that you do the job of two people. I might even say three. You have enormous wealth of knowledge and enormous talent. And throughout you have performed your duties with grace, and at least with me, a smile. But what most impresses me about you is what we, most people seldomly see. And it's inside your office in the course of your day-to-day work. I see your ability to maintain and upbeat disposition in an infectious way and easy, easy interpersonal skills. You lead the business office where you have established a positive and really supportive work environment. Your hallmarks are your approachable nature and your tireless dedication to your work. You don't shy away from hard work and challenging situations. During our years in Concord together, there have been periods of increased public records requests that you spent countless, countless hours on being sure we're accurate and responsive. We weathered some challenging situations. And you've been the model of professionalism, dedication to the direction of the districts, and commitment to your staff and to the school committee. You possess an impressive knowledge of procurement process and you have an ease with which you can answer any difficult question and help others like me fully understand the aspects. And in doing so, you're careful and you're thoughtful and your attention to detail is impressive. Your experience has been an asset upon which the school committee has leaned heavily. And John, you always, and I mean always, have had an open door. You welcomed anyone who arrived on your threshold, and I was a frequent visitor. You were willing to sit and walk through the most difficult counting and budgeting practices with a lot of patience and understanding because I knew so little when we started. And I've grown to admire your dedication to your work. You are intensely loyal and incredibly professional. You are unflappable during times that were turbulent and not always easy to navigate. And at your core, John, you're decent and you're earnest. You're always a team player and you give everything to every endeavor we took on. You'll be greatly missed. You leave a big hole in the business office, not only your knowledge and institutional memory, but your warmth and your willingness to work alongside others. As you set off in July, this is what I said at town meeting, I imagine you riding that motorcycle, puttering in your yard and perfecting your yoga and your mindfulness, all the things we love about you and that you deserve to enjoy more. Thank you, John, from the bottom of our hearts, especially mine. Thank you for all your commitment to the districts and to the families these fifteen years. You've devoted yourself to your work, to countless people, families, children, all of us have benefited and we're so grateful.
Thank you very much.
We'll miss you.
So John, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I don't have the history that Joanna has, but a couple of years now that we've worked together and, you know, what impressed me most of all of the time, quite frankly, is your commitment and engagement and energy to the job, to having these two districts run smoothly. And I'm just starting to sense the different nuances of your job, you know, in the past. And it's, there's so many different phases and parts to it that are so completely different from each other that you really need to be an expert in so many different fields. It's very impressive. And that, along with many late-night meetings like tonight probably, and many emergencies. Yeah, that's right.
Pass her off.
And something that's been mentioned by Kristina, I want to also highlight your really incredible engagement in terms of the transition and of a new superintendent, and of course now also with a new director of finance and operations. So we're grateful to you and we appreciate your engagement and have a great retirement. As a matter of fact, I was thinking about the chair and, you know, that'll give you a chance to rest a little bit after your very intensive retirement activities. And while you're sitting on the chair, you might just remember some of the really exciting and long and interesting school committee meetings, you know?
I might.
You might. Anyways, best of luck.
Thank you.
Can I go next?
Oh.
Then you can talk. I mean, John is, I can't believe, the relationship I have with John that's evolved in just a year's time is one of intimacy and intensity and just this incredible partnership that formed. And John gets all the credit for that. You know, I'm at the mercy of whoever wants to work with me and how they want to work with me as I come in. And John was right there from the get-go, ready to help, spent the early part of the fall teaching me hours, teaching me what these budgets included and advised me on what, where we were and what was going to come next, and always willing to be this unsung hero that I now understand is part of John's tenure here. Much of where this district is is because John made it happen behind the scenes. There was a decision made, this is where we're going, and whether or not it had been thoroughly vetted perhaps on the financial front, it happened. And that's to John's credit that he was able to always put the educational piece first. And I said to him at one point that that was going to be a mandate in the person to replace John, and indeed, I think it was our top priority to hear that someone who was going to come in was not just going to manage money, but help to support the education of the kids that we serve. On the flip side of that, John's work ethic is unbelievable. There is almost no hour that I can't text him and get a response anywhere, literally, I'm not kidding, four, 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning up till 11, 12 o'clock at night. Doesn't matter if it's the weekend, it doesn't matter if he's got a day off, he will drop everything and because he's local and I'm half an hour away, he will go wherever he needs to go. He will get to the bus depot, he would go to a school, it doesn't matter, he drops everything and does what the district needs regardless of, I don't know, whatever else he must have walked away from. Probably you, Kristin. He's going to be lost. He just said to me that it's just sinking in. I'm thinking it's just sinking in for me too because on a daily, hourly basis, there's this running tick in my head, I'll ask John, I'll ask John, I'll ask John. And the pile on my desk might be like this by the time I see him three hours later. And boy, I can see what's going to happen next week when I start to automatically build that list and John's not here. So he's going to be incredibly missed by so, so many people. And I'm so glad he was here for this first year and helped to really get me up to speed where I feel like we can take it and run, probably with a few phone calls along the way, just knowing how much he's done for me personally and for the district as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you all. And I guess I'd say this to the community, it's really been a privilege to work with so many talented people, so many families give a lot of their time and volunteering. The educators in this community, their contributions far outweigh mine. I've worked with people that have been here twice the time that I've been here and what they've done for the children in Concord is really, really impressive. So I feel very lucky to have spent my time in this district, the school system as I refer to it. And I just want to thank everybody for the support over the years and I hope that Concord and Kyleisle continue to support education where they have. It's a tremendous system and a lot of good comes out of it. So thank you all.
It was so fitting that this is the last thing he's going to do because he really is supposed to be off the rest of the week.
Oh no, because I have one left. It's cold in here.
I know, what do you do when we get cold?
Have you trained anyone to just?
I push the buttons a lot.
I'm control power. Are you really cold?
Am I the only one that's cold?
It starts to get cold.
I brought a jacket.
He's got a new jacket.
John, I want to thank you. You know, you could have said many things and what you said was that we're all here for the kids that are in these schools. And the fact that those were your party words to us, that you remember what it's all about is, I think, a tribute to the work that you've done and the spirit you've done with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we have to end it sometime. But it was, it was very, very sensitive and very appropriate, you know, as far as I'm concerned. So we do have another recognition and a welcome to our new MECO director.
Sure, glad to. Tonight we're welcoming in a more public way Andrew Namichi. Andrew's coming to us to be MECO director as of August 1st. Erin Jankis will be our new athletic director. So Andrew comes with a really rich background in his MECO work, having worked in both Lincoln Sudbury and currently for the next day or two as MECO director. He focuses on a really collaborative approach with the faculty and the parents and really supporting the kids and their social emotional needs, making sure there's high expectations both in terms of achievement and providing them experiences throughout the district. Does all the logistical pieces that go with the job of transportation, regular and late. And I think one of the things that was on our wish list in this position was some cultural proficiency expertise. And Andrew comes to us with that, having gotten a master's degree from Leslie in Intercultural Relations and having done some of that work and his other experiences. So we're really excited to have Andrew. Unlike John, Erin will still be here, so we aren't feeling a loss in this case, we're feeling just value add. So we're looking forward to his time and wanted to get a chance to formally introduce him. And I think he might want to say a word to our welcome.
Well, definitely. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
You're very welcome.
Members of the school committee, definitely appreciate that, warm welcome. And also to some faculty and members of the media in the audience as well as residents as well. So as Dr. Hunter said, you know, I have quite extensive background working with MECO. I've been quite a champion for the MECO program for many years. And so, you know, my sort of journey really started in Ghana where I was born and raised and came to the U.S.A. age of 10. And since then, you know, one of the areas that my family was very focused on was education. So my father was a professor in Ghana and my mother was a nutritionist. And so growing up, you know, I used to hear constantly, I'd be tearing out my head, that education was the key to the pathway. My father drilled the same in my heads over and over. And so, you know, my siblings and I have been very fortunate to be where we are professionally. And I think, you know, just based on some of my family values and morals growing up, I hope to instill some of that in our students and really get them to understand that they are a fantastic school district. And, you know, the future is definitely within their grasp. They want to pursue pretty much any aspirations they can. So I want to support them 1,000 percent and I hope, hope we are successful together as we work together in the years to come. Thank you.
Welcome.
So next agenda item is chairs and liaison reports. Any liaison reports from?
Do it. Minutes? Don't look at the different agenda.
No, no, you don't. I skipped them.
Okay.
All right, let's do the minutes first. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 6/12/2018 meeting? So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, of course, I always have discussion.
Well, there's always a letter or two.
So I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting, but I had a couple of questions that I don't, they may need to get clarified for the minutes.
Sure.
On the first page, under the Concord Ed Fund, it says Ms. Morano stated that they had several joint grants this year, including mindfulness, Q5, and cultural diversity. And I, I'm not sure, it was joint grants for the two districts, I would assume?
I think so.
And not, but Q5 wouldn't be in that bucket?
No.
So is that just a?
Yeah, I think that's just.
Clarify.
Just clarify.
Okay. And I should mention to Mr. Brown that the end of that sentence, the great example of volunteerism in Concord and Carlisle, we should note that there are Carlisle members on the board of the Concord Ed Fund.
Yeah.
And donors. On the second page, Valerie Tratnet's comments, and I don't know if this came out, but this is kind of a buggaloof for me as a school committee member. While I absolutely appreciate what she had to say, she thanked the school committee for hiring Mike Mistrullo as the CCH principal. I don't know if anybody happened to mention that we don't hire the principal. I wish we could take credit for it. But that might be something we deal with separately. And I think that might be it. So I don't know how you want to deal with those as edits.
Just to clarify.
I don't have.
I mean, there are the minutes as, as things were said.
Well, they're draft minutes. It strikes me the first one is a necessary change.
Yeah, totally.
The second one is the item about Q5, I think, and the item about the hiring Mr. Mistrullo, both could be part of our record tonight.
Sort of a footnote.
And thus clarify.
Yep.
I mean, having said that.
Because that's what was said.
You know, I.
Yeah, it's a public comment, so I, you know, whether that's correct or not, I don't think we need to judge necessarily, right? We can just.
Clarify.
Record it in the minutes or clarify it, right?
Yeah, I think it's just these minutes.
Had I been there, I would have said something.
No, no, and you're right.
How a community member understands the role of the school committee.
Okay. That's all I had for notes.
Okay, so.
So are we satisfied that the?
We would have to move that we accept the minutes as edited?
As edited, yeah.
And very much sure Erin gets it?
Mm-hmm.
You put on these, Erin put on these changes, okay, can I have a motion to?
I think technically we have had a motion to rescind the.
Yes.
Rescind the original motion.
Who made the original motion?
I did.
Okay.
I rescind.
Okay.
Motion as amended, I mean, minutes as amended.
Now we have.
Now we have a new motion.
Now you have the motion to approve the minutes.
And now I moved that the minutes of June 12th be accepted and approved as amended.
Check it.
All is in favor?
Yes.
Now we move to chairs' report and liaison reports, so I, anyone have a liaison report? I just wanted to make a couple of comments. We had originally thought possibly that on this evening we would discuss the formation of a budget subcommittee, but the two school committee members who are going to work on that charge are not present tonight, so we will very likely have that as an agenda item in a few weeks from now. And I also wanted to just mention one more thing. There were a couple of, you know, prominent residents that commented to me in terms of what the schools are working on as far as civics is concerned. And so this is something I think that we should address, you know, going forward and make, you know, have, maybe have some discussion about that.
Sure, there's quite a bit already in place.
Yeah, I know there's a state law coming, you know, but, you know, it'd be good if we kind of brought everyone up to, up to speed on that. And superintendent's report is next.
Sure, thank you. So in great satisfaction, we've wrapped up the draft of the strategic plan. We worked with the consultant last week as a leadership team to take the feedback and work that had been accomplished at the last large group planning session and get it into a really strong draft form. So we are now going to be looking at, on the rollout of that, which I began in a really informal way last week by having round tables at all five schools in Ripley, just to let staff start to see what's in the plan. It had a lot of great feedback. And then, so we'll be combining the rollout with our action planning work, which is the next phase. Kristin Herbert and I are working with the same consultant in her action planning sessions to talk on how we go about that process, which we feel also needs to be inclusive and a shared endeavor. The priority work is to determine the priorities because that, the plan has an awful lot in it and it's a five-year plan, so our next task really is to find the starting points. So that would be.
And where does that, that lines with you and the leadership team?
That's the starting point for it. I expect we'll ask for feedback. I'd already done some of that when I went to the round tables, said that those folks had areas. So that, that's the next level of dialogue is where is that starting point? And again, I think it's, it's going to be something we can communicate about and talk on a little bit before we firmly set it. There does seem to be some things that have some really nice seeds already planted to them, so we wouldn't want to lose momentum on those while we, if we prioritize something else. So we've got, we've got to have some thought processes, really fresh right now, so we've gotten that far. Cultural proficiency, we are all set thanks to the Concord Education Fund for pretty extensive professional development next year, beginning with Dr. Beverly Daniels-Tatum, who will be the keynote speaker for the opening staff events that will be held August 28th. In terms of communication and visibility, I could not possibly put all that I have done in the last few weeks because the last weeks of school are so busy and the invitations have been so ongoing. I have attended all of the graduations at both the middle school and all three elementary schools. I actually love the fact that as I stand there watching them graduate, I know I get to kind of know what's going to come next and be part of that versus a lot of the teachers and staff in the room really are saying goodbye and I don't have that sentiment, at least not until they get all the way to the high school, so. Q5, I'm almost speechless on how to describe what this last eight days was at the high school this, this year. It far surpassed the expectations that I think we had as leaders. And it was obvious the very first day that the tone and culture and climate of a school have been completely transformed into this really unbelievably engaging, interactive, highly hands-on and fully immersive experience for all kids and staff. And I can't, it's so hard to put to words. Hopefully you'll look at some of the blogs Mr. Mistrullo's posted and there's a webpage.
The webpage is amazing.
The webpage, student-created webpage in the throes of Q5, that project emerged. A video was produced at the later hour, also emerged as a project within the throes of the activities.
Really cool.
Really, really positive. And I, that's to everyone's credit from whether it was staff running events and really sharing their passions with kids, to kids who came in and said, this is something I'm really interested in and fully immersed. I mean, the level of engagement, we, Brian Miller and I walked at one point, there's no phones out, there's no, nothing. Everybody's doing what, what's in front of them because it's, it's really captured them. So it's just been great. And the logistics, I can't say enough, the logistics and the amount of energy it took, we were running 10 field trips a day for eight days, plus the international trips, plus the onsite work. I mean, the, the level of detail to manage all this was pretty phenomenal. And then finally, the huge thanks to the funding sources, both the Parents Association, the Concord Education Fund. This would not have happened without their, their funds, but wow, what a success. So we definitely will do our formal debrief and look at how, what worked and didn't. It's meant to be a two-year pilot, so we'll learn from what, what this June taught us. But I think a success on all fronts for sure, so.
So just had a question on that debriefing. When, when do you think that will take place?
So little, small pieces have started already. Stereos went out throughout the process, so we have data from the staff and the students. There'll be a formal debrief that'll happen, I think. We'll probably do some as a leadership team, but we really need staff engaged in that, so that will have to be a full discussion, so.
It occurred to me, excuse me, watching the video, that it was, I thought of Rev. It occurred to me, excuse me, watching the video, that it was, I thought of reveres, right? And it, and how that learning style is contagious and that we may be contacted by other districts that want to do something similar. So I thought the video or something similar would perhaps save a lot of time.
Right.
Of our time trying to explain to people what this is and how it works. It was phenomenal.
So just to support your point, we did have a little seed work from Weston's program that they ran. We're sure we surpassed what they ran.
Because Doc's clear, it's probably going to be knocked.
I know, that's right. And to your point too, Mike and I put in a presentation proposal to the Superintendent's Association Conference in two weeks before we even knew for sure what we were going to talk about. Thankfully we got amazing things to talk about, so we will be presenting there. But I think you're right. I hope people do want to hear from us, because I think if there's one positive here, this is doable at any school. The money we have with seed money and kind of particular to us, this is doable anyway. This is a commitment to reinventing the last two weeks of school. So, thank you. Yes, thank you to all of you for your support. Certainly without that, this never would have come.
Do you think, you see ways that possibly you could draw some of those experiences back into the school year?
Definitely, definitely. That will be the other part of the follow-up, is what did we all gather from those, those two weeks that we should and could be building more into our daily work? No question, yeah.
Not only were the experiences exceptional, I thought what was unique was all the students knew that this was community funding, augmenting all the teacher work, and together that made it possible.
Right, agreed. It really was a community endeavor.
And their thanks were very genuine to the fund and the Parents Association.
Yeah. Just quick updates on the STEAM Innovation Lab. The lab is actively under construction here at Ripley. Again, we're grateful, CF has provided another round of funding to ensure we have student-sized furniture for when the project is done, and that really will be, bring the physical space to its readiness for the fall. We're also going to spend the summer analyzing the special education K-8 review. We've got that in draft form, we're waiting for them to make a couple of last edits based on our feedback, and then looking at what those takeaways are and putting some, some steps into place as follow-up. And then finally, since the girls aren't here to share some of the good news, this past Saturday at the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Awards, the kids from the orchestra of Guys and Dolls, oh, you already know this, don't you? They've been nominated for, they had four nominations at the, at the awards, and so they won Best Student Orchestra on Saturday, and was also, they were also been nominated for Best Sound Design and Execution, and Best Supporting Actress for the young lady's portrayal of Nicely Nice Johnson, which I would agree was outstanding. So we're really excited for them. Yeah, go ahead.
Brian Baker was nominated for.
Oh, Best Lead Actor, thank you. I missed it here and then. Yeah, so really highly, and I, again, there was no question, the quality of that performance was award-winning, so thrills that the kids were nominated and nice to share out that that was a formal recognition for the quality of that work, so. And, oh, school got out yesterday and Friday, so we're, we're going to try to be in summer mode here fairly soon. Thank you.
Okay, next item is correspondence, and we really didn't have much in the last couple of weeks, but we did get an email yesterday concerning, guess what, parking at the high school.
What? Don't talk about it anymore.
But that subject will come up again. So reports for discussion.
Can I just make a, a correspondence?
Yeah.
We have, we've kind of come and gone with the practice of all of us getting the response to the email. So we all get the email, and it's not always clear that it's been responded to.
It came yesterday, and I'm going to respond to it tonight.
Have there been other ones? I just.
Well, there were one or two that I, I sent to everyone.
So I just want to make sure that that's our habit, because it's.
It's the system that makes it hard, because when you reply, it actually just goes to the, but yeah, it's important that everybody sees the response.
Yeah, just so we know it doesn't slip through.
Absolutely. Yeah, Dan did a very good job of that, and I plan to continue with that, I'm sure. Okay.
Is that you?
Yes, I've got one today.
Okay.
Yes, I apologize for that.
That's all right.
Okay, on to reports for discussion. The first subject is naming of Nani Roadway at CCHS campus.
Good evening.
Could you join us over here, please, and state your name?
I'm going to.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, slides and pictures.
Good evening. I'm David Erberk, for those who don't know me, I am in the department at CCHS, and I'm very privileged to also be coordinating our sister-school relationship with Nani High School in Wokaido, Japan. Been doing that since the mid-2000s after the retirement of CCHS guidance counselor, Dr. Tom Curtin, recently passed away after being honored by the Emperor of Japan, the Order of the Rising Sun. The second Massachusetts citizen ever to have been given this highest order of award that a non-Japanese can earn. The first was William Miller, who traveled to Wokaido in the 1870s and started off the relationship that we have between Concord and Wokaido in Massachusetts and Wokaido. And so we're coming up on the 150th anniversary of that relationship. Dr. Curtin really was responsible for the genesis of a modern phase of that relationship in the early 90s. And I thought rather than regale you with what we've done with the school as the centerpiece, so that I would show you a two-and-a-half-minute video. Show it, not tell it. So we have had regular trips for our students and faculty and Concord and Carlisle and Boston community members to Wokaido. Our most recent, I just led in this past April, we had 28 students and six adults. Every fall, and that's up on the agenda for that is this October, we have visitation from several students and citizens and teachers from Nani. And every time we go there, they roll out, I wouldn't say the red carpet, the red banquet, the entire town comes out to welcome us. We are treated so well by the families and by the town government and the schools, and that sort of hit apogee. Every time I thought it hit apogee, they kept kicking it up a notch. When they unveiled this past fall, a 175th anniversary of their city's founding, a street named after Concord, right in the downtown of Nani. So this is right next to their city hall. And our students were stunned, and they came back and decided to kick off an initiative. So I am here representing them, because they've gone off for the summer. One of them is in Japan as our William Miller scholar this year. That's Allison Lee, also Denke's Hunter and Rachel Zoo, but they came up with a proposal, and they did the legwork to research what it would take to get an equivalent sign put up here. Now, we're obviously in different circumstances in that the town of Nani has a line item that funds this relationship, and we, of course, are 100% fundraising. But nonetheless, surely we could do something. And so the proposal was to, after we talked about possibilities in the town, it really sort of hit a lot of stalls and roadblocks, what about the school? The school has been the centerpiece of this relationship since the mid-90s, and in some ways even back decades before. Surely we have the potential here at school to name that currently nameless peripheral road, that lonely, nameless road, could become Nani Street. And so students did some research with Crosby Designs. So Crosby mopped up, that's one way it could look. Here's several other ways it could look. The fun part will be designing the text that goes on it. But ultimately, they quoted us somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1,700 to $2,000 for it, which we think seems kind of fair. What they have in Nani is clearly much more expensive than that. But their dream, and my dream, because they've sold me on it, is to have this on-campus in a particular location to be determined by, you know, the administration and the school community in time for the October visit, this is already 150 years of our town friendship. I've talked to David Gressco, who is meeting a band trip there next April, and he has it on his authority that the school band would be happy to kick off a little ceremony should this sign be inaugurated. What we would need would be permission and a little bit of money. So I'll be quiet now and set to answer your questions.
So I love this relationship, and I've had some interesting experiences with it, and very interested in seeing the band go next year. My, my question is really, you said you hit, you hit some roadblocks with the town, because I think it's really important that the entire town come together to continue to support this relationship. So frankly, I would love to see a, a street by the town hall similar to Nani, or a street in Concord named Nani Street. Is that, have you given up on that? Perhaps, perhaps your, your letter says that.
I, I, I share your desire. I think that would truly be the most appropriate reciprocation. Without delving into hearsay, the conversations we've had really over the years about official town support have not been as productive as we liked. And so it was consensus among the, the group of us that maintained the relationship that this is really something we can control and do, and it could inspire the town maybe in the future to do more, but I've come to the understanding that this is what we're able to do.
Thank you.
I would echo Mary's sentiments, except perhaps I'd share the idea that maybe the high school driveway is one of the most prominent places in town, and we don't diminish the significance if it's on that driveway. Probably more people have traveled that driveway than any other single street other than Route 62. But to, to Mary Storey's point, could we use this where we go ahead? And I'm certainly inclined to see that we make it possible if we can. Can we use this effort to cement our relationship with the town side of the town, if you will, by bringing them on board endorsing this in the most efficient capacity that the Select Board could do, perhaps?
I would love that, and I'm hoping to add this to how to do it.
I think, so there's been some kind of committee or something, Nani, I don't know if it's a committee or a, some group that is school and town folks, right? I mean, I've seen, and the trip that most recently was with Select Board members and stuff. And I think, I, I agree with everybody. Out of the gates, first of all, wonderful idea, and really, that's a wonderful video. And I think that we would want to be, have a town-wide support field, which would be just at, at the very least, including this group, or I'm not sure, I feel like there's a committee, but I might be wrong.
Yeah, it's the Concord-Nani Network. Sue Curtin is currently chair, I'm a member of that committee board.
Oh, okay, so I just, I guess being sure that we, it's inclusive in its conversation, and I think you're getting the sense that there's support for considering this and, and supporting it, but be sure that we're, you know, it's, it sort of is a town aspect, so we don't want to not miss an opportunity, we don't want to miss an opportunity to sort of include them in the conversation, see where that, make sure everybody is, is in the conversation and supportive, if that makes sense.
Absolutely, this sort of team from the students, but if it's at the point now where, you know, we say, well, it's not just the students, it's not the school, it's not just the school, let's go with the town, sounds great to me.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that would be a good next step too, in terms of continuing the conversation, and I don't know if it's the Board of Selectmen's meeting, we might start there, but I don't know, anyone, John, someone knows more, but you usually do.
Just a little food for thought, maybe. I think changing the street name, or creating a street name at the entrance could be problematic in some respects, so just thought that what is often referred to as the Ring Road, if that were to become Nani Way, that could be a self-contained regional conversation. Just, the Ring Road, because the address of the building is 500 Wall Street. 80 Center is 198 Wall Street or something. So you've got some.
Technicalities.
Bigger issues that you're going to run into, but the Ring Road begs for a name.
Yes, as someone who's been writing about it in parking letters, I have nothing to call it. I have to keep describing it, so there is a name needed.
Just my thought. No disrespect to Nani Street, Nani Way.
Way, Way works for us. And in fact, pursuant to that, you know, we had a conversation with Crosby Designs that we wanted to intentionally make the sign not regulation street size sign, street sign size, rather, just to show that we're not trying to, you know, unjustly usurp, you know, Massachusetts state signage. We can make it a little bigger, a different color, you know, it's, we want it to have the ceremonial value. We, our fear is that we're going to get bogged down in all of the legal bureaucratic administration, you have to give actual street signs, so if we can make it like the Disney World Road, I'm cool with that.
So that's, I think that's what you may be able to avoid, what that suggests is possible.
So in your remaining hours with the Concord-Carlyle schools, can you advise David on next steps for some of the mechanics on sorting this out?
I think Nani Way, or for the Ring Road, is a regional conversation. I don't know that police and fire or any other governmental units would have any interest of opposition to that thought. Not that I do.
I like that idea, but I also think it's still important to include.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't still take that, since I've worked with all of.
Is Mary like a ceremonial fund or anything? The selectmen or town have anything that, a pool of money, you know, parade ceremonies, celebrations, any, any funds?
I mean, I was, I was.
I know we don't have any.
Okay, no, right.
Okay, no, right. I mean, I was at a Select Board meeting discussing the relationship and how much more money is spent in Japan on receiving Concordians and vice versa. And they were struggling with, you know, budgetary constraints and ways to get things done, you know. So now, have they been sort of consulted on this? I mean, did they have any kind of thoughts?
You mean, Nani?
No, I mean, the Select Board and Town Manager.
We have not approached them on this project. My experience in the past, having gone either myself or with either of the doctors, Curtin, has always been, we support the idea, but we cannot fund or even really give official a privilege. That's been our experience for the last two or three decades. And there may be very good reasons behind that. I really don't want to malign, you know, the Select Board's past and present. But I, those are the reasons why I had wanted this to be sort of a school-contained piece. You know, if CCHS decides to put up a sign on its campus, that shouldn't need to involve, although certainly we would welcome, we would invite and would love. But what I don't want to invite is the same defeating conversation that has taken place in previous years.
So the band held a mattress sale not too long ago to raise funds for their trip. I mean, is there, I have no idea what they raised. That's going to be a very expensive trip. I don't know how that gets funded versus this or together or one pool of money or, I mean, I don't know how that's going to work.
I would think the initial conversations around the inclusive group with the idea that John's proposed on the regional campus, that we've had a conversation, a pretty supportive conversation around the idea, just to be inclusive and not necessarily ask permission, but would they want to be part of a ceremony or, you know, just in that, the nature, that's the nature of the conversation. And then maybe we circle back and there's brainstorming about the funding. I mean, $1,700, you know, $2,000 seems, some, we could carve that up a few ways and get kids to help, you know, fundraise or whatever. We could, certainly there's a lot of that that goes on in school that, you know, might be ways of trying to find some funds to pay for it.
So as a next step, why don't I contact you and we will discuss with the Town Manager and the Chair of the Select Board, this idea, just to keep them informed. Obviously, this relationship is city to city, town in our case. So they clearly ought to be, at a minimum, informed. If not, maybe we can get some support, financial or otherwise, you know, to do this. Does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense. I would only add that if for some reason that hits a snagging, we could fall back on the school to school.
Absolutely. Yes, yes, yes. But at least we made a-
Oh, sure. I'm all for that. I'm happy to work with you.
A move in that direction and then, you know, we'll figure out what we need to do.
Thank you. If there are any more questions, I just have something to present to the group, but I don't want to preempt the questions if there are more.
No, I think this, I think we're moving ahead on this and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you for hearing us out. And finally, just to wrap up. This is from our sister school. So this is the school-to-school gift, which I'll present to Mike Mistrillo when I see him next, but this is just a drive-to-school gift. And this is for the district as presented to the superintendent, so.
Great, thank you.
This is from the high school.
Very nice.
Did we retain, we'd all be bowing.
Yeah, I keep thinking about that, isn't it right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Next on the agenda is the CCHS Green Team.
John. John. There's Green Team. Beautiful. I'm over now. It's a little cold in here. Do you want to open the mic? Just a second.
Here, we have live mics here.
These are live and those are-
Do you want to?
I just think you should.
Did you drop?
Can you get up? It's on. It's one of the tabs, I think. Yeah. It's a log on. Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah. Sorry. I think it comes in.
While we're waiting, how many of you did Q5?
All four of us. It was great.
Was it awesome?
Yeah. We got a rock climb.
Oh, really?
Eight thirty-five.
Where'd you go?
We were at Metro Rock Gym for a while, for a couple of days, and then we were at a, I don't actually know the name of the place, but it was a Boy Scout camp at Milton or didn't-
Excellent. What'd your colleagues do?
I went to Central Eastern Europe for like a World War II tour, so.
Wow. I wonder if that-
You're impressed.
And a little jealous.
I did the Soul Cycling, which was really fun. We like, we went on school bike rides through Boston, like experience everything. And I did P C history, which was learning about like the history of food and like how it affects forests.
Sam?
I went to Ecuador for two weeks.
Oh, man. I'm telling you.
Wow. And their hair and school clothes.
Yeah, so we're here from the CCHS Green Team to talk about changes we think would improve the entire community to the snack shack or snack bar, some people call it, to make the school more sustainable and allow for more healthy choices.
So our goal as an organization at the school is to take the sustainable principles that our town has and incorporate them into our school community. So the sustainability principles of the town are, is this list. And basically, it's basically to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels, so we don't want to be as dependent on our cars and on gas and oil, underground metals and minerals, our dependency on plastic and other manufactured substances and chemicals. While all being aware of our natural surroundings, which are really valuable to our town and I think are really strongly like valuable to our school, and doing this all while meeting the needs of our community. So we, as a group, have kind of talked a lot about why this is such a big issue and sustainability is something that we hear a lot. And I think there's a really good reason for that. This is the latest cover of the National Geographic magazine. It's kind of clever because it looks like an iceberg, but it's actually a big plastic bag. So this conversation keeps coming up in news and in politics and now in school, and we're trying to figure out why that's such a big deal. So getting rid of single-use plastic is a real priority of Green Team, especially at this project. We're, as a society, addicted to single-use plastic and straws and water bottles and utensils that from 70 years ago, 80 years ago, are still on this earth and we're not getting rid of them because they can't degrade, they're not biodegradable. So we need, the biggest way to tackle this issue and keep them from becoming microplastics and affecting our water streams and affecting everything that surrounds us is to stop using them. Another goal of this project is to create healthier choices in the snack shack. I think a big trend in food is organic and produce that is not packaged in plastic and things like that. So if we can incorporate some of those into the snack shack, not only will we be doing a good job of promoting sustainability, it will also be promoting healthier choices for our students. We have a great compost system at Concord-Carlyle and the snack shack, if we can bring more produce and more compostable goods to the snack shack, we'll be able to use this awesome system that we have more effectively. And lastly, the snack shack is a great way for us as students to help promote other students to have better environmental ethics and make better choices for their future so that they can, and we can all know what to do in the future so that we can help sustain our world and make better choices.
Okay, so as Grace mentioned, there's a lot of ways and simple moves that the school can make to kind of move from single-use plastic to reusable that are better for the earth and for the school. So on the next slide, there's a picture of a meal at like a student's lunch at C H State. And as you can see, like we're moving towards our future, pretty much everything on the tray is reusable and also healthy, which is good, except for like the plastic cup of ranch. But we have some ideas such as moving towards like big containers of ranch and reusable items that won't damage the earth. So currently at the snack bar, you can see we have just like tons and tons of plastic bottles, so in plastic bags that food is in. So instead, we're thinking of larger containers that are, will like reduce the waste and they're better for the school. So one idea is also, students are encouraged to bring like their reusable items such as water bottles and mugs, and they can fill up such as like lemonade and seltzer instead of paying about what a buck fifty for something that they're going to throw away anyway. So we have some cool ideas for cool drinks. So these, this is an example of some of the water bottles that people can bring in and mugs. And we're also trying to implement a system where students bring in their old water bottles and the school can sanitize them, just so we're like reusing them and they're better for the earth. This is, this is one example of how the schools can kind of reduce the plastic, such as like the glass containers of lemonade and the machines full of juice and stuff. And in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see, instead of seltzer, there's carbonated water and cold water and hot water. Students are also encouraged to use those instead of just buying tea or coffee or seltzer. And then finally, we also want to introduce compostable utensils because at the school, you know, if you're having like a yogurt or pasta for lunch, instead of going and grabbing like a plastic fork, you're going to throw it away at the end of an hour or so, you can compose that. And then also maybe introducing a system where you bring in old, old metal silverware and the school can reuse that. So just sort of, there's simple ways that the school can introduce these, but they're very impactful.
So this is like what we hope the transformation to look like from lots of plastic, plastic water bottles, plastic like, things like that and the boxed water and all those things into more sustainable, reusable methods. So these all, like these cost $1.50 each, a dollar fifty. $1.50. And these are all one dollar each. And then in the new system where it would basically be kids bringing in their water bottles and filling it with like different, like, this is actually the system that they have at Clover, if you guys know that. They have carbonated water, cold water and hot water. It would be very cheap to fill up if you wanted to, if you want just some seltzer in your water bottle instead of normal water, you pay 25 cents instead of buying a plastic water bottle for a dollar fifty. So, and then this is another option for replacing the single-use containers for like juices and sports drinks and other beverages, which are things like what they have at a lot of fast food places where you can just fill it up and you pay to fill it up. And this is another option, which is used in some workplaces where you can customize which drinks you have in it and you fill it up. It doesn't cost much and we have an estimation. For 400 students, the monthly cost would be $700. And we count, if they sell around three units, 300 units a week, a dollar each for each fill-up that you do, we would every month make $404 of profit. And for snacks, as we've already mentioned, right now, everything basically comes in these single-use plastic containers where what we would love to transition to is things like bulk bins where you take your like wax paper bags and you fill it with your snack, you pay for it, and there's no plastic waste. And it also just, it makes more sense, you can get. And these, this is a compostable container right now. In the lunchroom, I think, when you buy salads, it comes in these plastic containers, plastic clamshells. And these are actually made of corn and they cost, $160 costs $83. This is more of. And these are cups. So if someone doesn't have a water bottle, they can get one of these compostable cups and we could utilize our fantastic compost program that we already have. Last thing is the water bottle idea that we have, which is families that have some old water bottles that they don't really use anymore can bring them into the high school for kids to use, to fill up with these. And the washroom would sanitize them and you could give them back. And instead of using at the shelves that right as of now, we're using for tons of plastic bottles, we could use for reusable water bottles that people could essentially just borrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are straws used in the cafeteria now? You didn't say they're used. So they're just not in it. Awesome.
Could you tell us a little more about the compost program?
Yes, so we have a compost program. We have a whole bin at school. So students that have banana peels, apple cores, things like, anything that's compostable can put in the bin. And it goes to a compost center in Harvey.
Well, Harvey is the company that-
Oh, yeah.
That we contract with, because they have a biogas program that our compost goes to.
But I think a lot of the time that gets overlooked in the cafeteria, so if we can promote that and if the snack shack can sell more foods that are compostable, that would be awesome.
And if everything you're using, like is compostable, such as the silverware, then you kind of have no choice but to put it all in the bin and not still do it with the cycle.
I'd say it's not, for what the students contribute, it's not been going very well. There needs to be more of a unified program within the cafeteria to make that work well. Food prep though, for the kitchen staff is, you know, they put a lot of stuff in it, maybe it's composted, whereas it used to go down the disposal. So that's probably been the biggest positive transition towards the composting. But if, and I think these students as, as well as myself, having a son who's now starting to visit ecologists, we go to a lot of universities and see the programs they have, which are very inspiring, like essentially, and the same with Clover, anything that we give you goes in this bin, basically meaning that it's all compostable. And anything you bring in that you have for garbage, so they essentially just have two containers, so compostable and then garbage. So there, there are a lot of neat ideas out there and I think the Green Team would love to brainstorm with the kitchen staff on how to, to make this, to make this work. I think, you know, I think this could be part of our educational mission. You know, universities are doing it and we believe in this and it's part of our mission at the high school to create a more sustainable community. But I think there's, there needs to be a discussion and these, as well as many students are, would love to be part of that discussion.
Peter, remind me, isn't the composting new? Is it a year old, two years old, it's a lot of that?
Yeah, it's, uh, two years old.
Yeah, I feel like I remember talking about-
And bulk milk and the-
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you do the bulk milk too?
So the bulk milk was, you know, I think very successful and the composting, you know, it needs, it needs help. And I think if, if part of the mission statement for the food service staff was to be promoting these, then, then we perhaps get a little more traction.
So, help me out here. Carlyle's been composting for six, eight years, something like that?
At least eight years.
And bulk milk and the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you do the bulk milk too?
So the bulk milk was, you know, I think very successful and the composting, you know, it needs, it needs help. And I think if, if part of the mission statement for the food service staff was to be promoting these, um, then, then we perhaps get a little more traction.
So, um, help me out here. Carlisle's been composting for six, eight years, something like that?
At least eight years.
So it's, but it's different bins next to the trash and.
And kids handle the whole thing. And then over the summer, they use the compost for their garden. And kids over the summer, each kid gets a week, her family gets a week to water and, uh, harvest the garden that's right behind the school. So there's, there's a real lot here for you guys. I wish some Carlisle, I don't know if any of you guys from Carlisle, I wish we could get some Carlisle kids to talk about their experience because they've grown up with it.
Yeah, I've, I've got the full tour over there. Earlier this year, so it is a finely oiled machine over there. There's no question, yes.
It's exciting for the young kids to drag the compost out.
Put them up to the Laura Zimorano, who runs the composting program. Yeah, Lori, I'll say this woman's name.
Yeah, I'm, I, Jim toured me all through when they talked with the kitchen staff and we were very inspired.
It's a different dynamic, I think, right? Like the, the young kids, it's exciting to take the compost out.
Yeah, I think each school.
Not every high schooler is gonna be thrilled by that.
That said, I think the point is bringing our kids to more attention and it sounds to me like the next step is to engage with the, um, food service director and the kitchen staff and I'm happy to help facilitate that. Um, I'll just warn you, there's a lot of bureaucracy to the food service program at the schools because we're federally subsidized and have a lot of rules to follow and all of that, but that doesn't mean it's impossible. It just means it might not be as quick as you're hoping. So, but I think your points are well taken and I know the, the kids would respond well if we were to move forward. And I think to the mission I'd ask of all of you is how to help bring this to the rest of the student body's attention, um, and really make it visible and actively something they're engaged in to even use what we already have in place and then we'll keep moving.
Oh, I've, have any of you taken AP Environmental Science yet, or you're all doing it next year?
Yeah.
Okay, because that has been a life-changing experience for so many kids. And talk about bringing it to the rest of the school's attention. When those kids wore their garbage around that day, it was really impactful. You know, they collected their trash for a week and they showed everybody what it looked like. That, it's gotta be driven by the kids, you know, they have to get excited about it. That's.
Well, I would say yes, driven, I mean, you've got kids that want this, but you also need to have the leadership saying, you know, Marie, mom.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Because if you come up against a kitchen staff that.
Yep.
They're overworked and.
Fair enough, yep.
You know, and, and I must say to their credit, they really, they really try to, to accommodate. The new sustainability cart, uh, the food service cart that, that makes it available to, you know, our clubs and, and the plaque signing ceremony, you know, we, we rolled out the dishes and then that all went back and it got washed. So that's being reused. That's getting some great traction. And I, and I think they're starting to work with us on, on, uh, making that happen. But when that was first proposed, it's, that's gonna be too much, but they're making it work. So, uh, you know, I think if we're all on the same page, but you've got people at the school who've been doing things the way they have been doing things for a long time. And, and being green is not part of their mission statement. Um, and we've tried composting at the high school since I arrived in two thousand and five. And it never worked. And there were a few kids that would make it work, but you gotta have some people.
Where is the principal in this?
Where's the principal?
Like, has, has this been.
I think he's, he's very supportive again. I, it's a conversation that has to be had.
Yeah, I think actually it's beyond the high school. It's a systemic discussion, I think, because we're having similar conversations. It's coming from many schools.
I just didn't want to leap over him.
Yeah, no, we didn't leap over him. He knows they're good.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, no, no. And I, I think there's a systemic vision of what, what are we, what's our goal and what are our next steps. And I think that alone will help if we can say this is what we believe in as a school system and then promote that and then talking with the folks that are actually executing as to what that means for their world. Um, we can do that.
Concord, I was gonna say, Concord Ed Fund said the dedication and support and something like this as far as funding the piece. So I don't know if, if that's something we'd like the students to do.
Well, these discussions are not new at the high school, but we're grateful to you for keeping the conversation alive. Um, Peter, you'll recall two years ago, we brought in the farm-based education network, educators from all over the country. Uh, and they were horrified to learn how difficult it was for us to be, uh, fully sustainable for forty-eight hours.
Yes.
Just for forty-eight hours, because it takes but one stumbling block in this whole chain of events for a program to fall down. So I think you make a very good point. Simplicity is key. And I think, uh, Green Team, you make a very good point. If it's not visible right at the point of purchase, then we haven't been sending the message consistently that we can change our ways.
So Peter, I had a question. Uh, the town of Concord has a composting site, right?
Yes.
And has there been any kind of cross-fertilization between what the schools might be able to do? Yeah, no pun intended. And, and, uh, and the towns' efforts in this area?
Well, when you're managing food waste, it's a little different than yard waste.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, for animals and things like that. And so there are, you know, the two options. There's compost to soil, which Black Earth Farms does. And there are several restaurants within town that, that have pickup.
Okay.
And, and that was our original thought. Um, and, uh, we contracted with Harvey. And I don't know how, the, the details on that, but they, they do biogas. Um, and so, you know, that's, that's the system we're using now. So we have it in at the high school. They do pickup each week. And, you know, the kitchen staff, I think, is adapted to that well. If we wanted to go to soil, then, you know, they've probably adapted that. So, but as far as processing all the, the food waste, um, you know, I think there was a little alarm that it might start to smell. I don't think it smells any more than food that's sitting in the trash.
Right.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, it's worked well. And I, I just wanna say that we need to, I think we really need to be facilitating a better relationship with soil as an educational community. And I think this compost piece could be furthered by all the schools.
So what would you suggest as next steps in this, so we, we can get some of these ideas more firmly?
Well, we're looking to say if the school committee says, yeah, we'd love to see this in the snack bar and talk with Marie Barker and.
Yeah, I think it's.
And say, you know, could we try it out? Could we try it out? Um, you know, there's, a part of it was, you know, could we, could we make this switch? And, uh, yes, we're purchasing different things. Um, and so there needs to be a discussion. But a part of it's hardware, part of it's order.
So I will, I will make that happen. Yeah.
Thank you.
This is amazing, you guys.
Thank you, guys, yeah.
Thank you all.
So next on the agenda is our fiscal eighteen, financial end of year status.
The region.
Yes.
So, uh, we're going to end the year with about eight thousand dollars. Um, that will be payable for late arrival invoices and so forth. Uh, but at the region, it translates a little differently. To accomplish that, there will be an E and D impact that we've talked about. We've talked about E and D declining. And we're forecasting, uh, roughly around two point three percent or so, down from three percent. So we're dropping, we're continuing to drop. And this is the impact that we've been talking about, the burden of, uh, not the burden, but the impact of funding OPEC from within the operating budget, its impact on current year, the availability of funds to address current year needs is, is, um, dislodged by those funds going into the OPEC trust fund. So this is evidence of it here. But, uh, it's a, it's a good finish. Uh, it's not as strong as we'd like, but, uh, it's within budget.
Okay.
Does that make thirty-five?
Yeah.
I guess counting, it's thirty-two.
Oh.
Sorry, sorry.
That must feel good, John.
Yeah, it does feel good. Um, the regional budget will be challenging in the next few years. So I, I would caution you folks to fight hard for your budgets.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, John.
You're very welcome.
To our business, um, the superintendent evaluation, Joanna?
Um, yeah, so I've been thinking a lot about how, you have the evaluation, everyone can read the evaluation. Um, I thought I might give a little perspective to sort of a bit, a little bit bigger picture and some of the, and just grab on some of the really great stuff that, that Lori did this year and really, um, take a chance to just thank you and congratulate you on a lot of things that we've moved forward on. Um, I think the consensus among the committee members, and Melissa, you wanna come up? I don't know where you guys.
Oh, sure, I definitely.
You're gonna leave in the middle of my comments?
I know.
I'm just prepared. Okay, so for anyone who's, who's watching and might not understand, Melissa was on the committee until the spring and finished her term. Likewise, Dan Conti, but I don't see him here. Um, so the evaluators actually were Melissa and Dan, Mary, Wally, uh, sorry, Bob, myself, Wally and Heather, who are not here. Um, so, uh, I'm sort of summarizing for, for everyone to where I think, um, like I said, where we landed. And I said, it's just a thanks to, to Lori for a lot of hard work. Um, overall, really positive year. Um, and I think everybody's unified in their, their praise for your tremendous work, um, hard work, a lot, a lot of hours and a lot of unexpected things came along the way. And, um, I think you, uh, in particular, were faced with maybe more challenge, unanticipated challenges than, than a, an act, a normal year. But, um, there were some tricky personnel issues, bus route issues, religious practice and, and calendar issues. I'm not trying to give you PTSD, man. Just to name a few, just that we recognize, you know, you managed them really, um, with grace and understanding and, um, effective leadership. And I think, uh, we're, we're, we don't want that to go lost. These rubrics and these things confine us to certain things, but there, there's a lot that, um, went really well. So thank you. Um, I, I wrote a few notes to keep us sort of collectively pushing in, into, you know, your, your, uh, your work and kind of summarizing it. But your hallmarks have been obviously, I think obviously to most of us, your ability to, to listen really carefully to people. Um, you've engaged a wide variety of voices. You've worked really collaboratively and transparently towards consensus and decisions. Um, you've developed considerable trust, I think, amongst your staff and your teachers and family and families and even community stakeholders. Um, you've really, I, I think we've watched you very hard to, to, um, establish a lot of relationships and trust. Um, if you look at the evaluation, it does look like it's a, a wide range of ratings. Um, not wide, but it's, it varies some on the committee. And, and so I just wanna touch on that. I think the committee didn't all approach it in the same way, which is to say that while everyone was really positive, um, I think some people approached it as this given year and wow, what an awesome year. And, you know, really stayed on that. And some reserved a little more for the three-year cycle approach or two to three years. Um, so I think, um, that would explain if you see sort of, you know, uh, two different or three different ratings. It's just a sort of, um, this is my interpretation and I think, I think everyone agrees, a sort of, an approach that people just took as they sat down and did their work. Um, but either way, you know, the consensus was it was really a terrific year. Um, and I just wanna kind of focus a little bit on a couple of things you did. You came in with an entry plan and I think everyone told, there were two goals on it. I just wanna quote them because, um, you'll, you'll see very quickly that you did an amazing job with them. One, the first, your first goal was to quote, "Learn about, um, the Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle Regional School District, including the accomplishments, the processes and the perspectives of all those involved." And two, quote, "To cultivate relationships and build trust while listening." And I would say it's pretty clear that you nailed those. Um, and you worked very hard to do that in the first part of the year. So, um, in January, establishing your professional goals and student learning goals and district improvement goals kind of were the next step. And you didn't have a lot of time, but you got right to it in these last months, six months. And, um, I think the committee was really impressed with your dedication and hard work in approaching those. Um, and I think overriding sentiment is we're looking forward to continuing to work together. It's been really positive. The progress has been awesome. Um, and really kind of, you know, pushing together collectively through this next budgeting process, um, the cultural proficiency work that you spent so much time on, um, and the collaborative work towards a shared vision. And as you've mentioned, this great, you know, endeavor of, of strategic plan and as all that comes to, um, to, you know, sort of consolidate what we, our marching orders almost and our paths for the next, um, bit. And then finally, I just wanna say within those, the four standards, um, there are four standards that everyone rates on and they're instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement and professional culture. And they're big. Those are big, meaty ones. Um, and it should be pointed out that amongst those standards, I mean, if you wanna summarize and say the majority, you know, land in proficient, but there were very many exemplary ratings. And in particular, I think there was a unified sort of, um, excitement around your greatest praise in this family and community engagements and, um, your job communicating with families and not only families but stakeholders and inviting people in that might have ruffled feathers and allowing for them to, you know, be heard. Um, you've addressed the family and community concerns very echoably, effectively. Um, you collaborate with families really well and you foster a shared commitment to these kids and these families that, um, I think your teachers see and your, you know, your, your families and your, your principals and your staff and everybody. So, um, I think, you know, there's, there's so much there that's made people feel really good. And, um, we have a great, you know, I think, foundation built. I hope you feel likewise with all of us that, um, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna push in the same direction again next year and we're gonna, you know, see more, um, excitement and progress in the things that we care a lot about. Um, and so I think in conclusion, I, I mean, I, I know everyone will wanna say a few words, but the committee really, congratulations, one, for your tireless work on behalf of all of these families in Boston and Carlisle and Concord. But also thank you for your tremendous dedication and commitment to, to our schools and now your schools. And like, we're all in it together and we just, we really look forward to the next years and, and our, our collaborative work and teamwork together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
I'll go. Um, I just, again, wanna echo the thank you for all that you've done for, for this community. It's been amazing to experience. And, um, I still believe that this is one of the hardest jobs out there and you tackled it with.
I might second that.
The skill sets that are needed are like, you don't teach them and they're just, it's, there's, so there's, they're both broad and deep, the skill sets that are needed. And it's amazing to watch. Um, and you, we served you a full plate and then things got added.
And then some, yeah.
Um, and I just watched you handle it with resilience, with dedication, with professionalism. And, um, uh, you know, we're, we're just so appreciative of, of all of that. And, um, it, there are challenging times, I think, in any superintendent's tenure. Uh, can't control the world, can't control what happens. And anytime, you know, the few times that I had a concern about something that was going on or, you know, something out there, um, your door was always open. And I always left that meeting feeling better than I felt when I came in. And, um, I heard that around town and around as well, that people, that's just a universal, um, feeling, I think, uh, that people convey when they, when they, when we have a discussion. So, um, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I didn't take part in the evaluation. I haven't been around long enough to, uh, offer you any constructive feedback, but I have been watching you carefully and, uh, for the last couple of months have sat at this table and have been one of those people who have now, uh, come into your office. Uh, the open door, uh, notion is, uh, often claimed as what we all want, uh, to have somebody around us who has an open door for us. And I think you genuinely, you genuinely do. And Melissa said it better than I could have expressed it. You put it into words for me. You feel better because you feel informed. Uh, we may not have solved anything at the end of a, uh, one meeting or two, but we're, we're better informed for it. The, the part that's very clear to me is that, uh, what you brought to Concord and Concord Carlisle is not only the leadership capacity to take a long view, you know, to dive into the budgeting process that you're in the midst of now, the strategic plan, the proficiency work that you're doing. That's long-term, uh, long-haul work. And you've got your, your eye on that horizon that's gonna be better for us than, than today. Um, and you articulate that well for us and keep us informed and, and inspired about going where we need to go as a school district. But at the same time, daily life always gets in the way with the myriad of crises. always gets in the way with the myriad of crises that each of us have that come to a superintendent. And that goes for parents, and it goes for students, and it goes for teachers and community members. So I think one of your hallmarks that we can claim we know after a mere year is you keep your eye on the horizon. Where are we going as a school district, as two communities, and where are our kids going? And also, can we solve the problems of the day? That sort of bifocal nature of leadership and management, you've done it quite admirably. So my only concern is we set the bar high for you, because Concord and Carlisle likes to do that for folks. And now you've done so admirably that you've set the bar very high, too. So here we go into year two.
Well, we're all in it together.
Yes, yes, we are.
So I was probably, I'll admit to being the outlier in many of the ratings. And if you haven't figured it out yet, I don't offer praise easily. But I will say, and then part of it is the process for doing this evaluation is, and in my mind, a first-year superintendent really struggles to be exemplary. And I think that is certainly not personal. I have nothing but praise for you in terms of how you've done this job. I echo what everybody has said here. I'm not going to repeat all of it. I kind of hold back and say, take what you've done this year and leverage it for future years. So that's what I want to see. And I'm so optimistic that I won't be disappointed. But it's a, I took more of a wait-and-see approach. And admittedly, maybe that wasn't fair. I don't know. But it's where I landed. I'm just optimistic that next year it'll be just right on that trajectory. And I'm not concerned about that at all. I will echo what I said to you in private, and I use this 80/20 metaphor, is there will always be at least 20% of your day that is a surprise, at least. And I think we learned that this year, and we all learned. And I think it's incumbent upon us as a committee to make sure you're not working 200%, but that you're working 100%. I have some concerns. When you talked about priorities for the strategic plan, let's be really clear that we take on things that are manageable, because this job gets out of control very quickly. I think you saw that. But again, I'm looking forward to many more years to come working with you. So nothing but praise, and I will echo what others have said.
Yeah, and I just want to say that there's written in the instructions, there are an expectation of a three-year trajectory for a first-time superintendent. And I think that gets buried in the minutia.
Right.
And, you know, some people follow the instructions more closely than others.
If anybody follows the rules, it's me. No, but you've said it better than I will. It's sort of, a lot of this good feedback gets lost in the process and the boxes that we have to check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're universal in our...
Dislike.
You're doing this form, and it's, in pointing out its weaknesses.
Yeah, it's not fair.
Yeah, it's... It's limiting.
Yeah.
At best.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So a few thoughts went through my mind as I'm doing the evaluation. And, you know, I prefer to look at the bigger picture. And there were, you know, four or five items that just kind of stuck out. I think your very effective approach to changing the budget process and your relationship with the two finance committees is extremely important and was done very well. And I think it's showing fruits and will show even more fruits going forward. So I was very pleased with that. Your approach to cultural proficiency, I thought, was, again, very straightforward, very positive, inclusive, and just effective from an overall point of view. So I, again, I want to thank you for that. The strategic plan, I think we all agree, you have put tremendous effort and steadfastness into the process. And I think that's going to bear big fruits going forward also. And in terms of, you know, I have a lot of feelings to the community. You know, I don't have kids in the school, so, you know, some of the people I associate with don't either. But from a community point of view, your position and your, you know, just the feelings towards you have really come through very positively. And most community members get a great sense of much greater transparency than has been the case in the past. So again, that comes back to town meeting in so many ways, and that's extremely important. And last, and maybe most importantly, I think you have created a relationship with students, teachers, and other administrators that's top-notch. And so I think, again, we can talk about the finance committee, we can talk about other things, but, you know, day-to-day, that is key. And I think we're on the, definitely on the right track. So I appreciate it.
I think I'll only add that your presence in Carlisle, not just thinking about Carlisle. You've come to our town meetings, you've come to opening things at the beginning of the school year when you were, I mean, just the ground drifter cover in Concord is stunning. And so your presence in Carlisle means a great deal to us, because we don't, we're not used to seeing the superintendent of the district, Concord Carlisle District in our town. So that signals a lot to us. So thank you.
Can I say a little more thing?
Sure.
So as you know, I was on the hiring committee. And we had a fair number of choices. And I'm glad we made the one we did.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to agree with me?
I agree with you. I was on that committee.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We hope you sleep some this summer.
Yeah, yeah. Let's get for a week off.
Yeah, take a week off, starting whenever we finish here. Just a little feedback from the seat. The 100% support of this school committee has undoubtedly been the foundation of this year, whether it was the work I planned on doing and the work I didn't plan on doing. No matter how hard it got, or how, what I was calling to tell you, that support was unshakable. And that matters immensely in this job, especially in the hard situations, but in the good times, too. This community's outreach to me, and I think to your credit, as you realized what you were looking for in a new superintendent, you hit, you hit the match. That's just the bottom line. I'll take some credit for it, but a lot of it is because you found, you found in me what the community needed. And the response has shown that that match is a really good fit. And I feel that every day. And people are far more verbal and really explicit about that with me. I get stopped all the time, which I don't think happens in other places, even when things are good. So that's exceptional reinforcement. On a bad day, I can actually get stopped in front of a school, and a parent tell me something positive, or thanks for the newsletter, or you handled that messy situation really well. I mean, it's really unbelievable, frankly. And then the rest is just, we all need to build a team. And I'm glad that we all could see, I mean, that part was always a priority, but there were times as different issues would arise that I was having to work really hard at keeping that on the radar. So that's actually very satisfying, I think, at the end of the year, that the team is coming. And the foundation's there. The hard work can come from this, because we're all getting on the collective same page and the trust. And that means as harder stuff happens, we're in the right place to talk it through and go forward. So just the thank yous mutual. It's been a great, it's been a great year. Part of me thinks the surprises were as much as why we're as good as we are as the stuff I planned, as hard as that might have been in the moment. In many ways, we ended up better for it in the long run. So I'm looking forward to where we're going next, and the planned and unplanned, because you're right, that'll never not be the case. But I think there's just so much good to come. I'm going to be glad to hear something.
Awesome. I thank all of you for all the work to do the evaluations and stuff. It's not, it's not simple.
And Joanna, you spend a few hours.
Yes, indeed.
We gotta teach you basic math.
Yeah, that's right. No, thank you for that. That's, I know that's a big job. But, okay. So next on the agenda under old business is an update on our legal request for proposals.
Certainly. So I will let you know that we've received six RFPs in response. So we're very encouraged by that. The public request that you had us post is posted, and the deadline is July 5. I think, really, my hope for this discussion is that we talk on what those next steps will be. I would not want to lose all of July or more, because we didn't discuss that. So I think that was my hope, was we could talk on what comes next.
Good. You said we've gotten six responses. And I wasn't at the last meeting, but I think you sent it out to more firms?
We did. So it went out...
At the July 5 deadline?
Right. So it went out initially with a June 15 deadline to, I believe, eight, no more than eight, by invitation, based on the inquiries to the other districts. And then at the last meeting, or the one before, we talked about putting it out as a public process. So we've done that. And so the closing date for the broad invitation is July 5.
So where are the six from? That first, right?
They're from the first batch.
Got it, yeah.
Which include firms from six or seven community right around us, right?
Yep.
Yeah, referenced.
Reference, well-regarded.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of interest there, there's no question, having engaged with a couple of the firms there. There's definitely interest.
And so is it update, does it need any more direction? I mean, you'll...
I think we do. What are we doing as the dates close? And we've got a pile of RFPs, and what do you see as next? I think from my seat, it is your decision. So I want to be sure I'm honoring that very clearly. It's essentially a hiring process in many ways. I think I am equating it to that in terms of there's a paper screen, and then I would envision interviews and reference checks. I'm looking for, I guess, who wants to be involved with that and the timeline.
Just for clarification, are there two openings then? An opening of the ones that we do June 15, and then another opening?
Right. So this isn't a legal bid process. We can actually open them as they come in. We haven't, but we could.
So have your hopes, our hopes been realized in the form of proposals for services that allow us to do the selections we might want to do to...
I think that's the first question, as we look at them. Do we get an adequate enough response to feel comfortable going to the next phase?
Because we're looking for more flexibility, more options.
I think, I think so. Or, yeah, I think that's part of it.
So in your mind, who would be looking at those with you?
I'm really looking for your feedback on that, because it really, it is a school committee decision. So I guess the question...
Did we not know a former school committee member offered to help with that? Somebody that maybe left the... We could commit her since she's not here.
That's an interesting thought, yeah.
Am I remembering that wrong?
No, I think you're correct. I think she offered it up.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not a consumer of legal services, so...
Maybe Melissa, we asked Melissa, I don't know, one or two of us.
And she's had some good conversations with our legal counsel in Carlisle.
Yes.
Different flavors of...
Are there others who would like to be part of that? Under the chair?
I feel like at least one of us should be involved in that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I...
I'm gonna say that one.
I'm not, I'm not stepping up for it. I will do it if somebody...
Yeah, I mean...
Timing, so July 5. So maybe like that, what is that, Thursday?
That's Thursday of next weekend, though. I could put it out to you, Heather and Wally aren't here, and see who's interested, and then look back with shares.
I think that would be good.
Why don't I do that?
Yeah.
And you can let us know.
Okay.
But, I mean, basically, we should be sitting down by that, at least that next week, that following one day.
I would think so. Just see what we have.
Open a short list or something like that.
Yeah.
And do you see a particular timeline here as to, you know, let's assume we change one of the firms we now have. We deal with three firms, basically, right now?
Two primarily, two actively and regularly.
So if we were to make a change in one of them, as an example, what would be the timeline as to, and is there a particular time during the school year when it's best to do this and not?
Yeah, I think you're probably hitting the easiest timeline, because we're in the break between years. It's a natural, natural transition.
I'd say in the interest of time, if you want to just get your people in line, I'm happy to help. But I don't know if you want two people from Carlisle to do it. That's my only concern.
I think it's fine.
If Melissa says yes, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, and then just do some of the legwork and then...
Sure.
Yeah, that's great. I think, I think you're right to ask Wally and Heather to be sure they'll just check into that.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some coming with some kind of...
More to bring to it.
Yeah. There's a framework to look at them, right?
Yeah.
If you have several job candidates, what is it, what are the things you're looking?
That's right. What are we looking for?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. We'll keep that moving.
Okay, laptop program?
Yeah, this is another update. So last time we talked, the goal had been a five-year plan. And then as we tried to follow up from the meeting, and we're in transition with John and Jared, it was becoming too many moving pieces to anchor the five-year plan. So tonight I'm suggesting strongly that we would lease the laptops for the incoming freshmen. We got as far at the last meeting as agreeing the district would begin to take on ownership of all the high school laptops. The recommendation from Peter Kelly and I, and Jared and John collectively, is to do a one-year lease. It's not a one-year lease. It's a multi-year lease for the incoming freshmen, just to get us over this transition. Peter and Jared and I will set and develop the five-year plan to bring to you certainly early in the fall, because it's highly part of the budgeting process. So we just can't do all of it, this kind of turnaround with this many moving pieces. So that's the recommendation. And we would like to just go forward with that, and then come back.
Is that still a budget item in the neighborhood of $110,000?
Yes, yes, which is well under what's actually in the line item right now. So that becomes part of the long-term discussion.
Approach, yeah.
So let me drag this out for a minute. When did we start? Three, four years? How long have we been doing one-to-one? Three years?
When did we open? Four years?
Going into your third year.
Oh, there you go. So, I mean, setting money aside, we believe that it is the right thing to do for educational reasons for our students, to continue this program. So we talked about initially evaluating it at some point. I just don't remember that happening.
We talked some about it last meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
And watch the whole movie.
The whole movie. I'm not surprised.
Okay, no, that's an important part.
Yeah, I think, I think there's very clearly some vision that needs to be articulated about the educational value and use and purpose. And that came up consistently, all through the strategic planning process, that that needs discussion and clarification, and where are we going? But I think the actual tool itself...
Yeah, yeah.
Is infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the campus subcommittee that's being proposed. Just to give a little update, we had a pretty lively discussion about this at our last meeting, which is well reflected in the minutes that we approved earlier this evening. And, you know, this whole process of looking what to do next and looking what to do with the campus advisory committee, in a sense, came about because we're trying to increase parking spaces at the high school. And that started a series of meetings which made clear to, I believe, the administration and some members on the school committee that, you know, this is getting more complicated. There are more things to consider. There may be an engineering study of some sort that needs to be funded. And the prospect of a town meeting in Concord early October also has ramifications as to when this committee should start its work and how often it meets going forward. Having said that, of course, nothing gets done on the regional campus if we don't do it, you know, at the same time with Carlisle, you know. And so Carlisle, as I, as far as I know, is not, has not scheduled a special town meeting. So that's something that this committee clearly has to address and do some work on. And so, you know, I'm sure Red... And so, you know, I'm sure read the memo and the charge and so forth, and I'm obviously very interested in any discussion.
I actually didn't have time to read through this very, until just now, but if I understand, the idea is really, I mean, not just, but the priority, the priority is to get enough work done to have a fall town meeting, special town meeting. That's, that's-
Well, Parker's already having one.
We're having one. And along with, let's call it parking and a potential track, or two or three other things, there's a need for a capital warrant article, and John and Laurie, please join in the conversation. But John has mentioned that, you know, obviously, we didn't pass it at the last town meeting, now we need it-
So, the paving and the lighting?
Exactly.
And potentially a track, and some kind of parking solution.
Yep.
So, we want to be able to articulate, articulate an article? Define what that article will look like for, what, October?
It's early October, that's my understanding.
Well, that would be town meeting, right? It's got to be written with-
Oh, exactly, oh, yes, yes, yes.
So, the goal I saw, which-
Is this realistic?
Well, well, let me clarify, maybe. The goal I saw was that we would submit to get funds for a design to be drafted over the course of, between October and the April town meeting, so that for the April warrants, which we'd need some placeholders in time for the warrants, obviously, but the goal would be that we'd have time to get a design started, and see where we started, to see how the big picture fit together. That was the hope, that we're looking for design funds in the hall.
And I think, and there's a few things that we've, we know need to be done.
Identify things from this town that are on a tickler list.
Right. Yeah, and the HVAC, whatever it was.
The shut-side building.
Yeah, things that, so it may not be like the whole well-perceived plan and solution to this.
It may not, but-
But, but we can capture some of that, and I think the idea was to capture the plan, the, include funds for a design, or an engineering study, I should say, probably more than anything, right?
Right.
I think you want some very specific, very specifically articulated items in the warrant article, but you also want some general money, general capital money, to do the things that kind of pop up. When you think of the CPS, the Crown Public Schools, capital warrant articles, it's not overly restrictive, and you want to retain some sort of flexibility there, because things do pop up that might dislodge in a, in a more significant way what you thought was a priority.
So, I think my hope was that over the summer, which I guess is part of why we're talking on it tonight, over the summer Jared and I would have some committee members to process, because there, there's a lot of moving pieces right now, as we talked on what our wish lists were, we got the must-do needs from the town, we've had our parking is part of that conversation for sure, and then trying to figure out how and where we pull this all together, and to John's point, starting to figure out what goes in what warrant needs further discussion, and I just think it would be a valuable activity to do with some subcommittee work, so that all of you are pretty close, anyone on the committee's pretty close to it, and we are very clear on what we're trying to do when. I think that's a change for me, from where we were back when we first presented the campus advisory work, and we were in a place trying to figure out what part of that was next. That is absolutely still part of this discussion, but we've got other things we've got to sort out that either are ahead of that in terms of need, because we're being asked to complete them, or they have to be considered as part of and complement each other, so that we have one big master plan that falls together.
And I think somewhat, Laurie, if you remember, we've talked about, when I did the parking updates, update, and what that entails to consider on the campus, or track or anything otherwise, there are a few remaining issues that we also need to address before probably we really launch into the next one, you know, that we've talked about. So, where does all that go? And the conversation kind of went around some, I think right now we're considering doing this campus subcommittee, is kind of, that's the landing spot for, let's address these things. What are they? What's the comprehensive list of things remaining? What are the things that we know need to be done? And have some forecasts of, I mean, John even has probably a better sense from even not just next year, but maybe the next few years, what to be considering as you go down through the warrant cycles. But, and then, you know, we might have an opportunity to have ourselves also ready to at least define an engineering study that might look at where parking and/or anything else might-
Because that's become the catch-22 right now, we can't make the plans till we get the engineering, and we don't have the money to do that, and we've got to get some out of that stuck cycle right now. I think special town meeting seems to be presenting an opportunity for the funding to help it get the design and engineering work going.
Right, and I think we have an opportunity too, to get a comprehensive list from all parties that feel we have not quite tied up every loose end.
Implicit in this is the carry-on from the prior campus subcommittee, and everything else that has come up since then. And then we look at, to John's point, longer term and some as-yet unknown issues to sustain and maintain that, that building in that campus. To that point is quote-unquote "land-use oriented projects," perhaps too limiting for us, even though we think that's what much of this is going to be, I wouldn't want to preclude us from-
Right, how do you define?
I think that came out of a last charge, didn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we can always amend the charge, so that's-
But I think already we're hearing, you mentioned HVAC, you know, we're already hearing this, more than land use.
Facility and land, sure.
So, we were, we intended to do it this year, and for a number of reasons, various things didn't get included, and so, I think the work's already been done to identify some stuff.
I think you want language in there for repairs and equipment and so forth, you know, some of the challenges you're seeing up at the high school, maintaining the beautiful fields and so forth, and, you know, if you had a larger mower, that could be done in a more economical fashion, there's certain pickup trucks that are operated by the region, we have a 1987 back row, so, you know, there are things like that, that you want to have the ability to replace. And so, you want that kind of general capital-
There's enough to set to hand alarms.
Well, yeah, yeah, but what we're going to do then is choose what's a priority for-
I don't think he's, I don't think you're referring to the language in the subcommittee charge. No, he's referring to language in the, for the, for what article.
To that point, though, we need a contained place to bring all of it and dump it, and sort it through, because I think, before we were debating whether it be community involvement, I think as the last few, six weeks have played out, we need a school committee, administration, collective group that sits and just makes a master plan.
Right here, hammers out all the stuff.
And then, then we can invite the community in, once we've got our ducks lined up.
Right, in our direction.
And in our direction.
So, a thought was that if we had five members of this subcommittee, that we could work throughout the summer, needless to say, one or two individuals aren't going to be able to come to every single meeting, so at least the committee could continue with, you know, with its work. And I believe there's enough interest that we have five individuals that, that would like to, to be part of it.
Yeah, I think the "it" is making sure this charge is accurate, and it allows for all the things that-
I would ask us to indicate the idea of not only planning and implementation, but prioritization, because there's a lot of possible needs, and they're going to have to be sorted and sifted and prioritized for a whole lot of reasons. So, might as well put that in the charge, and in that it is so open-ended in all the right ways to give the school department and the school committee some flexibility here about how to move forward, where to move forward, I would hope we could add a reference to facility and land use projects, so we don't limit ourselves right out of the box.
Well, of course, point number four says, consider any other appropriate matter that the subcommittee becomes aware of, so we can, you know, and we're all school committee members on this, on this committee, except for Laurie, who's a member of the committee ex officio.
Fair enough.
So, you know, and I think it's kind of important to get this committee started, and then, you know, we can-
But why can't we edit this?
Oh, no, we can edit it.
So, we just got this yesterday, and I, it's one of my other issues I want to bring up, I just haven't had time to spend looking at this, but my initial, and I watched some of them, I watched that part of the video, that discussion, for the last meeting, so I find this a little bit confusing, and I think anybody that's heard the campus advisory, about the campus advisory committee, which my hope is everyone in the community, this is going to be confusing to them.
Because?
Simply the name. And it's not clear to me what we're doing-
Yeah.
-and how it's different from that committee, so, like, I just need to spend more time on it.
So, I think the only question is if we don't go forward tonight, which we certainly, I knew was a certain possibility, because we've tried not to vote things the first time you see them, how do we keep some topics moving over the summer, which I guess I can solicit a few of you to sit with?
Exactly, yeah.
Perhaps an approach could be, at least until this is ironed out, and I don't know if it's chairs, just because it's an easier designation, but we both happen to know a lot about the campus, but so is Mary and I, obviously Wally and Heather, but they're not here. But, you know, just to kind of sit and prioritize and address sort of like how we're going to deal with some of this stuff we already know, you know, like, we have the big, I think we need to have a town planning meeting, so we have all those people that Brian listened to, and we close that loop, and we have, I mean, if we can get this ready for July, this can sort of be maybe articulating, and we've already done the legwork for the work that, you know, we've captured the concept we're talking about with John, oh, no, sorry. Well, we're going to need to capture what he thinks at some point, I'm going to come knock on your door.
The meeting's recorded.
Is the door open at your house, like, or at your office?
No, the shades are down.
I mean, maybe we can just do that as a, like, a working group, let's get, let's just get a little bit momentum on-
I don't think we have to.
Because we don't have that, and we don't have his, we can only start to pull it together, maybe, with the notion of-
You don't need this full charter to-
Right.
-to know what needs to be done in terms of inventorying products.
Right. I mean, I think this has helped us understand what we do need to, and maybe we just keep the ball rolling until either we better articulate this, or maybe the list helps us say, okay, now, moving forward, two people are going to just work on the next steps, or, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either. I tend to think we're going to, probably, we need some structure, just to get us through the next number of months at least, but we certainly can do it a little less structured over the next, till we get this ironed out.
And the entire process has to go better if the campus advisory committee sees the link between that and this.
Yeah, it really is part of the next phase of how that works.
If that can be made clearer with Mary's help, then let's go with that.
And if there's a better name-
Yeah.
-by all means.
Questions on, you know?
This was just a holding.
I mean, you know, some districts have a standing facilities and building committee, so if, if that is something that would make-
Could be the high school facilities committee or something, right?
Building and facilities committee, yeah.
Yeah.
Capital projects, capital planning.
Yeah.
Bottom line for tonight, we want confidence that if we don't move on this, it won't slow us down in any shape or form, correct?
Exactly right. That's exactly right, and we will do this, you know, on that basis, and then, I would like to see that at the July meeting, that we finalize, you know, the charge and all the rest of it.
Yeah.
We'll have time to work on that.
So, I will get you my comments back on this, so we can do that for the July.
I think also, yeah, editor comments is good, we'll put it up.
Yeah.
And I think the idea of, of a name that doesn't have this-
Yeah, can't be so confused.
Yeah, that's clearly different.
Oh, good.
Well, as you say, like, places of facilities.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do a normal search of the name, but, and any names are welcome to reconsider, obviously, so.
Okay, any other questions on this? So, that, that works for you, Laurie?
Yes, I will follow up to, engage with the two of you for now to keep July moving, and get Jared up to speed, and Brennan before he knows.
So, we probably should, I mean, we're going to look at this, it's going to be a month from now, July 24.
Yeah.
We ought to have dates-
In it.
-proposed dates or something.
That would be great, so we could just hit the ground.
I don't know if, I don't know how to do that if we don't know who's on it, I don't know if it, my dates that work for you?
The, you know, obviously, I've done some work on this, and Joanna has showed interest in being on this committee, so has Wally. I'm obviously interested, and Court I've talked to as being interested. If we have a number of five, and then obviously one Carlisle member, but it's, you know, the meetings are open, and anybody can come up.
I didn't realize we'd have that level of interest, so, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly.
I think the goal, I would imagine the goal is to-
I figured you were going to say that.
You what?
What did you say?
But, but I don't, somebody needs to drive the schedule, because I don't want to sit here July 24, and then everyone goes, I don't think that team's doing-
No, 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 we will-
I will take care of it. It's all on the schedule, so we have a-
I think it's planned to, I think it should be right out of the charges. It should be something consistent, like, you know, it's every other Wednesday, whatever it's going to be.
Exactly.
So that everyone, if you can't go, most people can, you know?
Yeah, get a schedule out, no.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. So, now we're on to action items. Have a few votes to take.
And Bob, just so you know, Mike Robichaud is here, so I assume he's not just here, because he thought this was a great meeting, come on. This is the first vote for the overnight trip.
Oh, okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the CCA's football trip to Maine on July 27th and 28th, with the condition that you receive assigned district liability and insurance waiver for all participants.
A second.
Any discussion, so we will hear from the coach.
Great, what information can I provide?
Just maybe a little background, is this an annual thing, and does it involve, you know, the whole team, or what percentage of the team, or, you know, what the location, and, you know, what are the goals for it? Just some, so we understand.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, and I've been grateful for approval past several years. So, it's a, it's a football clinic that's held up in Elliott, Maine, which is, I guess it's two, so it's 70 miles away, not too far. It's offered and open to anyone in the football program, rising freshmen, so grades nine through 12. Typically, we'll get about 40 kids that go, and my staff goes as well. And so, it's a great fundamentals clinic for two days, and probably, one of the best parts of it is spending a night up in Portsmouth, there's a hotel that we've gone to year over year, it's a great opportunity for the kids to bond, go out bowling, and they're well-supervised and that kind of thing. So, Wayne Woods has been great, helping to organize transportation, it's been an opportunity where if someone's had financial strength, that we've been able to kind of step up and help with that as well. So, we really don't want finances to be a gating factor for any family, so it's been a terrific opportunity for us, it's helped the kids kind of onboard to the preseason a little bit more smoothly, but there's a huge benefit to the kids, especially new kids, kids that are new to football, and increasingly, that's the case, there's just more and more kids that haven't played football until they get to high school these days, and we're thankful to get as anyone that we can, you know, these days.
Absolutely.
So, it's a terrific opportunity for the younger guys to meet each other, but the older guys to kind of look out for them, and, you know, it's just a mesh in forms of mind.
So, what's, what's the average day look like for these kids?
Sure, yeah, typically, it kicks off, well, day one kicks off a little bit after 9:00 AM, because there's registrations and things like that, but the day is segmented into, I think it's a total of six units with water breaks and things like that. So, it's teaching of fundamental techniques of every position, it's an offensive-oriented clinic on a very particular type of wing team, offensive kind of, or I think, but-
Not to you it is, is it?
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So, yeah, so kids are able to, you know, separate into positions, so positional groups to individual kind of fundamental drills, and it all kind of orchestrates into finally bringing teams together, we've worked with teams from Maine, the Maine teams work with our kids and that kind of thing, so, you know, we're ultimately running plays against bags and shields, and so it's a low-contact, not fully padded clinic. contact, not fully padded clinic, but enough, enough contact with bags and shields and sleds and things like that where kids get working. So it's two, two days of that. It's great.
Super.
Thank you for spending your summer doing that. Or a couple of days.
Yeah, it's great.
Well, the kids are, they really benefit from it too. They come back really, like they, the bonding part is really even more what they get out of it. I think it's really awesome.
Any other relationship, team building activities?
It's great.
Interesting.
It'd be great to give it time to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept a gift from the CCH Parents Association in the amount of $1,500 with gratitude to be used at the discretion of the principal.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just notice the second time tonight, we are learning of how fortunate we are with the CCHS Parents Association and their support.
All those in favor?
I'll make a motion to appoint, makes me sad, but well, happy, but sad, I'm going to appoint Jared Stanton as procurement officer. I recommend that we make a motion that we vote to appoint Jared Stanton as procurement officer.
Chief procurement officer.
Our apologies, there's a word missing.
Chief?
Chief Jared Stanton? Oh, chief procurement officer, got it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm on a roll here.
You're unstoppable, I.
I make a motion to approve the FY 18-19 salary increase for non-bargaining employees.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Woodbeatty to the Adult and Community Advisory Board.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Paula.
And finally, so Joanna, why don't you make this one because it's a vote for, well, I'll make the Concorde.
All right.
I'm going to vote to authorize the superintendent to award a vendor contract for purchase of two school buses that are compliant to specifications. Should we do these all at once?
I'm sorry?
Then the authorization to, should we do these all at once and then talk about them?
You could do it for each committee because they are the same for each committee.
Okay.
So you could do, you know.
Well, there's two, so do we do them all both? We have to do one motion for ordering and financing.
Yeah, I would say yes.
So that was awarding the contract, should we talk through that or?
So you've moved, you've moved to the Concorde Carlisle School Committee?
Yes.
Okay, so I second that.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want to hear from John?
So what this is, what this is above is, the bids are actually, we went on for a second round of bids, the two July 2nd. So in order to avoid untimely delays for a subsequent school committee meeting and to also hold the pricing on it, and we're already seeing some impact in the buses associated with steel tariffs increasing, we just want to make this, keep this moving as fluidly as possible. So this will give larger the ability to act in whatever the.
And Jared?
Yeah.
Okay. Might go on that?
We just did, actually, but.
We did.
Okay. So now I'll move to authorize the superintendent to award a vendor contract for financing and purchase of two school buses that are compliant to specifications, and that's for the Concorde Carlisle School Committee.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And for Concorde.
Can I move up my case, Jared?
I vote to authorize the superintendent to award a vendor contract for purchase of two school buses that are compliant to specifications. This is a Concorde vote.
Second.
Any discussion?
John, anything to add? No, same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I vote to authorize the superintendent to award.
You move.
Sorry?
You moved.
That's all right.
Sorry.
I vote to authorize the superintendent to award a vendor contract for financing for purchase of two school buses that are compliant to specifications.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
Now we turn to CPS business.
So can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because we're going to duck out of here, right? Anything else? The only thing I'm going to harp on is the agenda moving and getting things at the last minute. I just, I really try to prepare for the meetings, the weekend before the meeting, so when we're getting things on Monday and Tuesday, it's, and I like to be flexible, but it throws me off, so the more we can avoid that, the better.
Well, point well taken.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn the regional school committee. Oh no, I can't, can I? We just have to leave.
No, you're going to adjourn the.
Right, okay.
Right, we had regional business now.
So did you move to adjourn?
Yes, I did.
Sir?
All those in favor?
Aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, aye, okay.
John, all mess.
Thank you very much.
Bye guys, thank you.
Good day.
It's Justin, Justin's still back there, ready.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're nice.
Thank you for waiting. Thank you for patience.
So there's actually a different Google Doc that just outlines the proposed changes.
Yeah, is that, yeah, that's on the agenda? Did you get the overview page?
No, not the most recent link from Sunday night, it's the entire draft, is that.
I'll pull it up, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Justin, go ahead and start talking to it.
That answers the first question. These are amendments and updates.
Yeah, we're going to get.
So throughout this massive document, there's many highlights and I think for sake of time, most of the highlights just come from reflection from a cultural competency consultant who just shared, you know, some work changes, you know, P and T today, things like that. There's a document that was shared that points you to, if you want to scroll down to page 17 to 18, there's a proposed rule change. And actually, before I shared this, let me share a little bit about the process. So these proposed, proposed rule changes were voted for, voted by the school advisory council at the middle school, which contains, for the first time, we had students upon the student school advisory council, so a sixth grader, a seventh grader, eighth grade representation for both of them, good parents, good community members, good teachers, special education parents, special education teachers. So six months ago, the school advisory council, with the charge from the faculty and staff, decided to focus more on the body of the work that is represented on pages 21 through 28, which is a behavioral rubric, which doesn't necessarily capture any rule changes. They're actually all our existing rules, you know, the greatest hits of rules that are most frequently broken at the middle school. But for the first time ever, it outlines first consequences, second consequences, third consequences, and so forth and so on, so that we have both buildings kind of on the same page, which is pretty important. The due diligence in this behavioral, in this rubric was through searching up different middle schools that surround us. And this work actually started with Ann Klein Scott in Peru about three years ago in starting this, so just want to honor that work. So this is a body of work that was, you know, a big focus of the advisory council this past year, but started a few years ago with the assistant principals as well. So I kind of leapfrogged the cell phone, we'll get back to that one, but since we're on the rubric. The other thing I want to just share and make public is I shared these proposed changes, including this rubric with all middle school families. It was shared at two faculty meetings, a February faculty meeting and then again quickly this past faculty manager. And then I had parent forums. I had a parent forum during the day that shared this out and I had a parent forum in the evening as well. And then I visited students in lunches, sixth and seventh grade students, because they potentially will see these changes for next year as well. Well, I guess we're focused on the rubric for right now.
Do you want me to scroll through?
Well, as a parent, this is, and not having ever had this opportunity to be this well organized and all of, scroll down and see, this is great. This is a nice one shot to figure out what's going on and what might come and understanding, I mean, this is, this is a great idea.
Faculty and staff have a enormous appetite for this type of clarity.
Yeah.
And for, you know, a rule that looks like allegedly is broken, you know, the investigation happens, new process is given, it's found that the students, you know, has broken the rule, it's very clear to both families, students and teacher, what the consequences will be.
Really clear.
Have you thought through the monitoring aspects of this? I'm just thinking of unintended consequences in terms of how, how this gets enforced.
So we talked about, we're going to have a new referral process. We talked about this with the faculty and staff. There's going to be a new online referral and the assistant principals and I are fully expecting a spike in referrals, especially when we get back to the cell phone rule that we'll talk about in a couple minutes. Because right now, cell phones are really out and about and pretty active and using in middle school and we're looking to reset that. I don't know if that answered your question.
To, to a point, yeah. I simply don't want this to, I would love to see this uniformly enforced, change what you think needs changing, what parents support needs changing, and I wouldn't want you stuck down in the weeds of record keeping to make this thing successful.
I think one of, Justin and I have had a lot of conversation on the fact that this was a missing piece in the middle school handbook, which startled both of us honestly from our other experiences that typically right on down to the elementaries, you've got some level of code of conduct language in the handbook, which actually this discussion has brought that up with the elementaries and we're actively looking to build that for next year. Just the clean, clear messaging and communication of what to expect, A, what's expected of kids, but B, what will happen if certain things occur, is, it just takes so, so much of the guessing work out and kids and parents feel they're being treated fairly because there's a predetermined set of process that's going to happen, rather than one thing for one kid, another for another, depends which assistant principal interacts, all that can just add and complicate what's going on. So I think obviously the goal here is that we reduce, overall, we've reduced the amount of need for this, but in the meantime, it certainly serves, serves everyone well in terms of clarity.
Absolutely.
So Justin, I just have a question. The school advisory council, how often does it meet and how many members?
Again, there's three students, three parents, three teachers. And we meet the first Thursday, 7:00 AM, at P30 of every month.
Every month?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions? You want to go to the cell phone?
Sure. So on page 17 to 18 of the handbook, if you still have that up, right now, our existing policy is students are allowed to carry their cell phone on their person and we find that extraordinarily problematic at the middle school. You know, students are just too impulsive and they're using them all of the place. One of the first things that we were able to do first off is eliminate the cell phone use, you know, at our, kind of rebranded our dances to socials. And honestly, you know, that, we will always allow students to carry on their person, but just the sharing out of that rule, we're very pleasantly surprised of students saying, oh, okay, you know, and really having the command of that respect. And I think that's where our handbook has been alarmingly silent in just clarity. And as fun as this sounds, one of the things that we are going to follow as well, it's a quirky little rule that's, that's hidden, is a sharing out in a public presentation of this handbook in the beginning of the year. And again, it's not a fun assembly, but it is very meaningful in my past professional practice and it gets everybody, including adults, you know, that is not an assembly to miss and to do common playing on the same page. So right now, students, or this will just end it, students are allowed to have their cell phone on their person. This exists, this rule change offers up that students would be asked to put their cell phones in the locker.
Now, would that be all day or would it be, could they take it out for lunch or something or it's from start to finish of the school day?
Before the school day starts, they are allowed to use it before they make that visit to the locker, which is an often important check in. It helps out the office because of, you know, the days that they didn't have cell phones, that time in lunch is when students are looking to access the office phones the most. As soon as the bell rings for the last, the last class, students are able to take their cell phones on and again have it on their person.
So in the last several years, all the students at the middle school have been able to carry their smartphones with them.
Yes.
So do you think you're going to get a little opposition to this, you know?
Well, out of the three potential changes, actually two, if you want to include behavioral rubric, this was the one that generated the most feedback, with parents especially, during those forums that I had. There were some parents who had concern in extreme circumstances, you know, I'm an active shooter, a, somebody coming into the school. There were some parents who felt, you know, having a cell phone on their person, on their students, on their child was important. But that said, I received, you know, from that point, I received a lot of email feedback saying these forums are going to be available, which just a hallelujah to this.
That I follow, absolutely.
You know, so it was, it was about 50/50. Students were more focused on, we were looking to reorganize sandboard to put the building, to have the houses, which are our great little teams together actually, which is truly the, you know, the model of what a team in a middle school should have. And we were, there were active discussions about not allowing eighth graders to carry backpacks. That's what generated the most students excitement, petition, conversations, because it's a rite of passage for some more eighth graders to carry backpacks.
I think it's great.
And then the five, any other questions on cell phone?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming to reassure parents who want to be connected for those crises, that you simply have to double your reassurances that, that office is covered and they can reach that office.
Definitely.
And that we're going to communicate out very actively through any of those kinds of situations that, if something's actually occurring.
And we heard from any public safety folks that would say this compromises kids' safety in any way? I don't think so. No, okay.
I did reach out to Scott and the chief.
Wonderful, perfect.
You know, he shared some information about what might happen to cell phones, you know, in, in a case of emergency and how it might be difficult to reach, you know, kids and parents and such.
It actually looped into the poor coverage issue and the fact that in a crisis, this town is really adequately covered for crisis level cell phone communication, so anyway.
And when we're carrying for kids, we don't want them to think they're independent with their phone, doing their own problem solving.
I mean, as, as kids get older, you understand that's part of the environment now, is that often before we can communicate anything, kids have already told families what's going on. I think in the middle school, it's very appropriate that for so many other reasons, the access is more restrictive and that we are still very much the messengers of the information. That said, we're respectful of the concerns and want to reassure everyone. That said, we're respectful of the concerns and wanna reassure everyone, but we think there's more gains than negatives.
And, you know, these phones are much, they're being used much more than just a communication agent, it's the videos themselves.
Right.
It's just a whole other staff one of the most concerned.
Yeah.
They have cameras too, don't they?
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. We know they're using the cameras.
There are a whole lot of things.
Have you seen the Radio Shack ad that has about fourteen different things for nineteen ninety-one? All of them is a cellphone.
Right.
That's good.
On page forty-one, there's a proposed change to our current honor roll. Our current honor roll just has a principal's list of students who achieved after a conclusion of trimester, a B minus or above in all their classes. The school advisory council is proposing breaking that into two lists, a principal's list of students who have an average of, average of all grades of an A minus or above, and an honors list of students who have an average of grades B minus or above.
I like it.
This came from, I wanna say mid-winter, you know, when we posted out when our school advisory council meetings are happening, a parent came to visit us. So, it was not a member of the school advisory council, but, you know, a parent of the middle school who shared, you know, compliments that my letter of his child making the principal's list was the first letter, letter ever to share out what a principal's list was. And he was quite surprised that the principal's list was B minus or above. He asked us, he asked us some data points about how many students were achieving that. And it was well over five hundred at the middle school. With that said?
Yeah.
Well, I'd say, as a parent, middle school are very thoughtful additions to handbook and helpful.
Yes.
Those sound great and they're, you got my support on those, as a parent, especially school.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are great. All right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Justin, you go again, right?
Go to the end.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just following my colleagues at the elementary school and just with some of these initiatives, just sharing out the highlights at the middle school. So, the first slide just shares out that we are with the elementary schools and following the high school and creating RTI teams. RTI again is response to intervention and really allows a school to look at what may be an entry point to special education, but allows the school to really focus on delivering interventions before that entry into special education. For systems and organizations, schools that have a good RTI process in place usually see the special education numbers drop significantly. And that's one of our goals in developing RTI team, teams, I should say, for each building. Before I came in, there was not an RTI team, there was a student support team that just focused on students, any students that, you know, may be in crisis, or it was mostly focused on behaviors and not really much of an academic round. So, we're looking to have that pivot, to have an SST team, but also an RTI team as well. RTI has been alive at the middle school for a couple of years, there's just been no body that has taken ownership and helped define entry and help progress monitor and help define the exit to RTI. And also a body that looks at the data that could present to a group like yours of students who are involved in intervention. Just another quick highlight to that slide as well, you know, I think we had a very successful parent's day as well, so we keep another head. Here are faculty meetings where, you know, we're so fortunate to have the support that we have ninety-minute meetings. I've never heard of ninety-minute faculty meetings, so I was very excited upon my entry. And using a good portion of that time, turning it over to teachers to model good practice. We also had at least two, maybe three meetings where students came in and modeled some things for faculty and staff as well. So, that was a school improvement plan goal that we had for the beginning of the year that we did pretty well. Moving on to the second slide. With the elementary school, we implemented the Foss Science Curriculum as well. Science department will share, or does share great feedback with that curriculum, much better than the curriculum they had in place prior year, again, what that curriculum was in here. But it was, that curriculum you may have heard was really focused on the laptop and really not much of getting your game story and, you know, being part of the engineering and scientific process. And then, one of the things we've quietly done that we're probably not going to make public until next year is creating, looking at both libraries and creating small space areas for our students as well. Moving on to the next slide. I think one of the biggest highlights in kind of touching all students and really strengthening the relationship between our staff and our students is with our new advisory program that just came to an end in its first year. While we're going to survey students next year to impact and compare that to the challenge success data that we have, that's now quietly about a year and a half old, you know, the many students who commented on Homebase and the success, I was very proud to present an award to the Homebase advisor, or the committee that brought Homebase to the middle school during our school assembly just a few days ago. And I shared very publicly in that assembly what separates, I think, us from a lot of other middle schools that have advisory program, is our Homebase numbers are about one to nine, one to ten, because we have nurses, we have custodians, we have tutors, we have teachers, you know, we have almost every able adult who served as advisors. And that's pretty remarkable, you know, that really shares, you know, a mission of a school that is looking to promote that relationship throughout all the adults and all the teachers. We did become an official challenge success school, so we will be working forward with challenge success next year. We completely revised the fifth to sixth grade transition, just in time for a reconfiguration where some of that won't apply in about a year, but that's okay. And, you know, we did have consensus for the first time, I'm told, I think some of you know my mother-in-law worked as a nurse over at PBD about twenty-five years ago, she said that at that time, they were talking about reconfiguring the schools, so.
Twenty-five years ago.
Now we have consensus with our teachers and support from our teachers for that reconfiguration to happen. We're gonna head to the next slide. This talks a little bit more about getting into the weeds of our RTI. For our ELA, we have Stars Renaissance, which again is a quick assessment that gives us instant data to help us better identify students in need of intervention. And then we have Alex, which is an RTI universal screener for MAP as well. And then we're looking at.
Were those the, the quick, small number of questions that the elementary school principals showed us, that you can get a capture?
Yeah.
Am I getting that right?
Yes, no, that's right.
Okay.
So, you. Stars.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what those were, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
You're remembering correctly.
You know, so both of these have been, the Stars more so have been implemented this past year. Again, turning the keys over to that RTI group is the goal for next year. And then we're currently exploring the social and emotional intervention tools that already are within the district that we wanna tap and work closely with. And then, the other two are really just an echo of the elementary schools.
Hopefully, they help you with some of those facilities.
Well, that.
Hopefully, they can help you with some of those facilities.
Yes.
Right.
Justin, could you revisit the RTI and the SST? When they get uncoupled, so you can drive deeper with each one, how do they stay connected around the same child?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So, a lot of the conversations that happen in SST are going to spill over to RTI. Right now, the SST conversations are very much just that conversations and, you know, adults, including scholars, school resource officers, are just, you know, talking about, you know, trends and things are happening and this is what happened. And there's really no data points, you know, there's no data driving those discussions. So, I think there's still a place for those discussions, but I think when we gather the names of the students who are discussed in SST, we need to move that over to the RTI team and say, "Okay, this student has been struggling in the realm of social and emotional, have we assessed them?" Before, again, all of a sudden, their family is asking for a special education assessment for that child, because right now, our numbers of IEPs that are driven from the social emotional realm are on the up. So, you know, to have the conversations from the SST team, bring it over to the RTI team, involve the parents in on that discussion, and have some data points and put them into intervention well before that referral to special education is called.
Thank you. Can you tell us about challenge success, or tell me, I don't, I don't know what it is?
Sure. So, the challenge success is an outside organization that came in to both the secondary level of the middle school and the high school, surveying all the students, focusing more on stress level, a little bit of what we talked about earlier with the advisory program and student staff relationships, engagement, how well students feel like they're engaged in school, also homework, things like that. So, this outside organization came in, surveyed all the students, but then offered parent forums that they ran, they, you know, brought in their own person, and they also did some visits during faculty and staff meetings as well. So, that was all included with the survey and the investment that was made through Concord Ed Fund and PTG at the time. The investment that we're looking to make right now is to gather a steering committee of folks that challenge success can train, parents, students, they also have student availability as well, faculty, staff, so that we can start taking upon ownership of how an organization changes within our organization, we don't have to rely upon them as a consultant.
So, next year, it looks like trying to embed it in the school.
Yes.
Thank you, Justin.
Welcome.
Very much, all your hard work.
Very helpful, thank you. And thanks for your patience today.
Hi.
That's the second meeting in a row he's gonna clean up there at the end.
The last one.
It's the bully bread.
Yep.
All right, Johnny.
Okay.
Last hurrah.
So CPS, as you all know, we have a challenging year, beginning of the year. We actually went into a semi-hot freeze. We deferred a lot of purchases and to see how the winter would shake out and how different things would happen in special education and so forth would play out. So, as a result of that freeze, we captured a lot of funds. And as the year went on, we also qualified for extraordinary relief, because we had such a sharp uptake in special education and that provided some additional monies and.
That's a state.
That, yes, I'm sorry. Extraordinary relief for special education. You have a sudden spike in your cost, they'll, typically, circuit breaker relief is for preceding year's claims, but when you're actually in the midst of a year and costs rise dramatically, they have a program used to call it pothole, now it's called extraordinary relief. We qualified for that.
That's great.
And so, that brought in about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars more free reimbursement in the current school year.
Awesome.
Now, what's awesome about, it's awesome that that affects in the current school year, but it also translates into those costs that, that sudden spike that you experienced during FY18 is going to be present going forward.
Right.
So, in managing all of these monies, we had circuit breaker carryover from the previous year, because we had a multi-year plan to address the impact of the parity contract with the Concord Teachers Association. We had a multi-year plan, we wanted to preserve circuit breaker carryover so that we could offset the mid-year step during FY18, which we were able to do. We wanted to preserve, preserve enough of the circuit breaker carryover in our FY18 close, because we didn't have, if that wasn't fully funded in the budgeting process, we had a strategy to carry over enough money to address the fact that, that mid-year hit is going to be a full year hit. So, what we went after in the budget process, so to speak, during FY18 was funding for the initial step. We covered the mid-year step by managing the seventeen budget and we hope to do the same process again for the nineteen budget. And we're in a position to do that. With these monies that came in, we've had the ability to prepay roughly five hundred and forty thousand dollars of tuition for next year, so it takes some of the pressure off of the extraordinary spite that we experienced in special education.
So, you can prepay that with FY18, you're saying?
You can prepay, yes.
I got you.
Yes.
To help with FY19?
Yes, you can prepay collaborative tuition, just a case collaborative tuition, not a prepaid in a tighter case assessment, but a fairly significant portion of that. We also ran into kind of a, an unexpected wind, not a windfall, which was very late tail in the year, and that's what's been, working with the town, those of you who have been following our, on the committee, you'll recall that a few years ago, after we finally had a stable environment for buses, we started buying them again and there was capital borrowing. And so, our cost, because we changed the configuration, you may recall, I'm approaching the rear engine buses, saved us money, and as a result of that process, we ended up about eighty-six thousand dollars under that capital borrowing. Now, we're going to use that money in the eighteen closing. We're not gonna use all eighty-six thousand dollars of it, because we're going to keep it related to bus acquisition costs. So, we're going to pay a portion of the leasing cost, about thirty-six to thirty-eight thousand dollars. And what I'm highly recommending to the committee, and because we just learned of this, I would say within the past seven to eight business days, what I'm gonna highly recommend to the committee is that you allow us to order a new F-350 dump truck that we can use for plowing. Where our vehicles, our maintenance vehicles, vans and pickup trucks, we haven't been able to keep up with in the past few years. Court, you probably remember the years and years ago where we were replacing, you know, pickup truck every fifth to sixth year when it got three, about ten, twelve years old. We need to replace, I think it's a 2008 pickup truck that's been plowing and doing a lot of heavy work. It's in tough shape. We can't really weld to the frame anymore to mount the snowplows and different things like that, so we'd like to move forward on picking one of those up. And that, we don't really need your approval, we just want a form, we think it's a prudent thing to do.
Yep.
It will save money, but we want people to be aware that that's where this truck came from. And then, we'll have a fair amount of circuit breaker carryover again. That's all ironing out, part of the closing process, we look at all of the purchase orders that were put in place to, that we use with a lot of vendors in an ordinary fashion, typical recurring supplies, and we look and see how much money actually was not expended from each of those, they roll back into the budget. So, the number is settling out here, but we're gonna have a good, good close, but bear in mind that the reason we're having a good close is that we deferred a lot of purchases. So, those are things that are gonna come back down the road.
Yeah.
But we're managing the monies right now to take some of the pressure off the nineteen budget and if, if managed properly and if there's not. budget and if, if managed properly and if there's not, and if there's a reasonable budget increase for the FY twenty budget process, this can all work out to take some of the hit off of that additional step, the last final piece of closing of the parity contract. So, for the committee, for the Concorde School Committee, I think you need to maintain going off after a similar increase, like you had this last year, so that you're well positioned to use these monies in conjunction with a relatively normal increase and it, it won't be such a shock in managing that last piece of the parity contract. So, we will close out the budget with about eight thousand dollars left. Again, we, that's a number that we use to just wait employee mileage requests, just do little different things at odds and ends. Some of the smaller vendors we deal with, kind of what's referred to as mom and pop stores, they're not always on top of getting their bills on the time of the cash, and also some of the big firms aren't good at that either. So, that's the process and it's another, this will be the thirty-second close. In the black.
In the black.
In the black, they're all in the black.
Awesome.
We're there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I just need to weigh in, as awesome as it sounds, a lot of what's happened here is, you heard, the money's going to special ed essentially as we close and have any funds left, just to try to get ahead of next year. That means we left some regular education things behind and that's, that's a very difficult to dangerous place to get in the habit of, because ultimately you don't want special ed competing dollar for dollar like that, and that's exactly what we just did, whether, we did it first within FY eighteen and now we're rolling into nineteen because we managed eighteen that way, and I don't want us to stay in that challenge cycle, yeah. So, just point made, that, you know, it, it's the right way to go, so we continue to build buffer in going into special ed in FY nineteen, but we really borrowing and from Peter to pay Paul here to some extent, so.
You can pick cans out of the road for a while, after a while they rust out and don't grow.
You know, and I guess I'm, as Jared and I get going on, really starting the budget process the way, we're gonna build a zero base, how that all plays out still has quite a bit of time yet to see, but it might almost look better than it is if we're not convinced of how we got there, so.
Right, right, yeah.
That's exactly right, and that's why I caution you, you know, that sounds like a rosy picture.
Right.
But if, if you don't get a relatively normal increase, you know, we, you're, you're gonna have a real challenge.
Yeah. While being balanced with whatever else we come up with as we're doing all this other work we've been said we're doing, so it's a lot of moving pieces and just point taken, that sounds really great and it kind of came with an expense to it.
Yep.
Not kind.
No, this is good news, but I don't think we're reassured about it being easy in the future.
Right. Well, it's good to know going forward.
You know, I'm gonna sleep better knowing we have some circuit breaker carryover to work with next year, for sure, because if we get another August with move-ins like we did last year, we.
Yep.
We got through the year because we knew that money was there and we managed to preserve it, but, yeah, so.
And it can happen.
Yep.
Yep. Well, thank you for all that work and we'll just keep our eyes on it.
Absolutely.
Rolling forward. Um, all right. I'm looking for a motion.
I move that the Concorde School Committee vote to accept the gift CMS playground equipment.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
This is the same as what you saw last week, or last meeting, we've run the, the process of having the required meetings and things leading up to this, we've also clarified what the billing was like and who's doing what, so we're in a really good place, so excited to have you vote this in today.
Oh, good, that's much better than last time.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, a little cleanup to do from last time.
Great. All right, any, any other questions?
For the record, the benefactor. Is referred as a gift.
PTG?
It's the CMS PTG.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, I move that the Concorde School Committee vote to approve the CPS three-year successor building service workers contract.
No, you have a second.
Fine. Uh, second.
Um, any other discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just with, with, thanks for their work and let's, let's remind ourselves that they'll be here through the summer getting us ready for September.
This is some of their hardest season, yes, yeah.
Thank you for what you're in.
Aye.
I move that the Concorde School Committee vote to approve the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen CMS handle.
Second.
Thank Justin for that hard work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Totally aye.
Aye!
That's it.
Oh, no!